Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 27th, meeting, 2024, 5:30, Morro Bay Vets Hall. With that, we'll take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. If I may ask the city clerk to establish a quorum.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Mayor Protem Landrum?
Here.
And Mayor Wickson?
Here. Thank you. And with that, Councilmember Ford, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Newmeyer, full session report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No items to report, and most of the items were status updates anyways today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will go to councilmember reports, and I'll start to my right with Councilmember Barton.
Well, I had the opportunity today to observe our crack Public Works team fixing roadways in my neighborhood. There had been a big failure, and they were just doing a great job. So I just wanted to shout out to the Public Works staff.
Councilmember Landrum.
I had the last-minute privilege of getting to attend the Seamank Convention with Mayor Wickson and city manager Yvonne Kimball. And we, I feel like that that was as a liaison for the harbor advisory board and also on the subcommittee for offshore wind. I feel like it was a really valuable experience for me to be there to advocate for our harbor and for our, and for money for offshore wind to reimburse our, as far as staff, our staff time and resources that we're spending on that. We met with different congress members, as well as Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, hmm, who else? I don't know. Mayor Wickson can fill you in on the rest of that, but I feel like it was a really valuable thing for me to be there, to advocate. Also, I wanted to report that on Thursday, I attended the Cal Poly meeting that they put on through their Sea Grant that was on offshore wind. They were discussing community benefits, jobs, and economics. And they had two speakers from the NREL, National Renewable Energy Lab, and as well as an economic professor from Cal Poly. It was really a full house. I don't think they expected so many people there. What I, my takeaway, some of my takeaways from that were that the community benefits will be mostly, the majority of them will be for workforce training and/or supply chain development. And that each developer is, can choose their own community benefits, whether they do them or not. They've already made that decision ahead of time when they, when they did their bidding. And then about, let's see, wages, the majority of the jobs will be in the wage range of $44,000 to $54,000 a year. And they, you would only need a high school diploma or some, like a trade school apprenticeship. And if anyone wants the notes from that meeting, they are on their website at marine.calpoly.edu/community-meetings. And also, I attended the meeting yesterday, held by the police and fire chiefs and on homelessness. And I was, like, it was another full house and very impressive meeting. And I think that the community were very much, like, they were, they felt good about it. They were able to ask questions. Chief, both chiefs took the time to answer them. And there was a request for more of those types of meetings, and I think that that might happen, too.
Councilmember Ford?
So I delivered at the last council meeting a Vistra report, and as many of these types of projects that are submitted, timelines do change. So it's looking as if we're more toward the end of March, getting the EIR report back. So I just wanted to make note of that for the community. And also, after attending the planning commission meeting on February 20th, where we learned a lot about via study session, the power plant, master plan, which I think is important for the community to know, is a plan that's triggered by the energy storage project submission. So I think that's something that I noted that's important, that I want to convey to the community. And that timing is and can be very confusing. It is to me sometimes on a lot of these items. Most importantly, though, there will be community engagement opportunities, and I definitely want to stress that these will be going on between mid-March, going into April, maybe even later. But I wanted you all, the community, to be aware that there will be ones that the city hosts, and then there will be ones that Vistra hosts. So I definitely want that to be delineated for the community, so that you attend whichever ones you want to attend, and you know who is providing the information. Then I also attended the Channel Counties Division Dinner last Friday evening, where I represented the city. Apparently, if you don't have a representative there, you get completely razed. And not a good scene, but I was there for us. And I got to share a little bit with our regional partners, some of the things that we've been doing here, one of which was the Houslow 35-unit building that's going to be opening in a couple of weeks. I also shared something that the mayor helped put together, which was the fundraiser at the Bay Theater and the filming of camera with Bow Bridges. And people thought that was kind of fun, too. So aside from our sea otters oysters on the half shell and some of the best chowder, right? And then I wanted to add to Councilmember, or sorry, Mayor Protem's, Landrum's comments with regards to the forum that both chiefs put on. It was absolutely fantastic. I am so appreciative of the two of you and the support and energy that you and your teams have given to that issue. And it was very clear to me, looking at the audience there, that they definitely felt the same. I think probably one of the hardest things is, is, you know, recognizing the realities of it, right? And, and really having an honest discussion about what those realities are. And I really appreciate how both of you went about it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. In effort to not repeat a lot of things I've already mentioned about what I've attended, I will piggyback a little bit, though, on the forum that occurred yesterday, as well on the camping ordinance. I appreciated the amount of time that was given. It was two, little over two hours of, and he took a lot of questions, and really took your time to fully, fully answer those questions to the best of your ability. Well, I do have a suggestion, and maybe we can talk about this as a future agenda item, if we need to do that, I guess, to have more meetings. I'm not quite sure. But, but anyway, I do, maybe next time, because this one was early in the day, at 3:00, so there may have been a lot of voices that were missing, or people that weren't able to go. I would like to see if we do more in the future, that we do one in the evening to be more accessible to a different group of people, and also some of the same people. But that would just be my one suggestion, my one critique, because overall, it was an amazing forum. So thank you for that. And then lastly, I attended the Public Works Advisory Board meeting as their liaison, and it was a unanimous vote, after they reviewed, to recommend to city council, to improve the contract closeout agreement terms between the City of Morro Bay and design-build contractor, the Water Resources Center between Plonk Blanc and Veach. So they asked a lot of great questions. As always, they never disappoint. A lot of detailed questions. And as always, I always recommend to the folks listening in, if you want to really hear a deep dive into all things Public Works, attend their meeting, because they do a really great job. And so I look forward to that coming to city council, especially with their unanimous recommendation. So that's all I have for you this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. First, I want to start by welcoming a Morro Bay High School student that's joined us this evening, Michael Pascal. He's job shadowing the city council this evening, and we appreciate you being here. Thank you. The Morro Bay High School Girls Basketball Team just went last week to their CIF playoffs. I had the opportunity, was invited down to see them off. It was a lot of fun, a lot of high spirit. Love being a part of the Pirate family down there. I won't belabor the homeless meeting. Since all of you have shared, there was probably 70-plus people there, kind of did a head count. It was a phenomenal meeting. Thank you to the chiefs for all your work. Thank you to Public Works and the other partners in the city for the cleanup and the ongoing work that you're committed to with this. I think it's huge. There was very good public engagement. I know you have more meetings planned. I would, I would make one request, and that's that at our future meetings, we have some sort of amplified system, because at the back of the room, it was difficult for people to hear you. That, that would be my only share from that. Had the opportunity to attend the Women's Council for Realtors in San Luis Obispo County. They had invited a handful of female mayors, and myself and the Atascadero Mayor, Heather Moreno, were able to join them. It was a wonderful engagement, very great to see a group of women in these leadership capacities at the county-state level. We also had the Chamber of Commerce hosted the annual summit and state of the city last week. We all attended that, as well as staff. Supervisor Gibson was there, Visit Morro Bay was there, and myself. I do believe that they will have that on their chamber website from that meeting, so you can listen in. It gave us an opportunity to talk about our year in review, the successes that we've had the last year with capital projects and our goals that we've reached, ones that are still ongoing, and did a slideshow to highlight some of the great things that the youth programs for Kids Club and the Police Department, Fire Department, it's just like a great thing to see all the things that we've achieved this last year, and I'm really proud of that, as well as to work with these council members up here. So we're moving forward on year two, and all good things. The, I want to thank the Morro Bay Commercial Fishing Liaison, Cable Liaison Group, for sending us to Washington, DC. The majority of our trip each year is funded through them, and it allows us the opportunity to participate in the acronym is Seamank, but it's California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference, where we meet with a group of other California ports and harbors to lobby for our dredging funds and our united voice. As Mayor Protem shared, we had 14 meetings one day. We divided up. Our city manager, myself, went to eight of them, and and Councilmember Landrum went to the other six. We made a lot of headway. We covered a lot of ground, literally and figuratively. And the other days we spent with our lobbyists that we have there in Washington, DC, and as she had shared, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers, gave us an opportunity to talk to them about our revetments and their challenges that we faced. They built those, and so we're looking to them to replace them. We had a conversation about our inter-channel dredge that they do every six or seven years, and because of the Steelhead in the bay now, it's been postponed another year. They're tagging Steelhead. We haven't seen that for a long time. So that's delayed it for the back-channel dredge another year. The Bureau of Reclamation, who has funded our water reclamation facility, we met with them, as well as our lending agency, WIFIA. We were able to have our Public Works Director join in with us remotely. We certainly missed our harbor director, and we're sorry that he fell ill prior to that. But he's definitely followed up since then on, on many of these opportunities. We also met with our congressman, Carver Hall, our local congressman, and those conversations will be ongoing and looking for support for funding for our North Teapier. We've discovered that the cost to address the needs have increased significantly, and so we look forward to those continued conversations and some opportunities for some resources kind of outside the box that we might chase after a little bit. So I know that the city manager is going to provide an update at next month's council meeting that will be included online and in our packets. So please look for that for more information. And if you have questions, please reach out to any of us, and we'll try and answer them. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Mayor, I'm, thank you for your report. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to move on to public comment. I do have some speaker slips. First up is Don Maruska, followed by Linda Winters, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council and of the public. My name is Don Maruska. I'm a 30-year resident of Slow County, and we've lived both in Morro Bay and now on the bay in Los Osos, and I have my office here in Morro Bay. Our family really loves our local fishermen. I go and purchase fish from them every week. They're also avid birders. I've been at every one of the Morro Bay Bird Festivals the last 28 years. It's great every year. And we enjoy the natural environment, and we attract friends and family and visitors to the area because of the wonderful environment that we have. I care about many of the issues that the community has with regard to the potential for offshore wind and its possible impacts on us. And I'm also aware that our working waterfront, sort of the hallmark of Morro Bay, it has dwindled in activity. When I first came here, we had tugboats and salvage yards and everything else. It was a bustling kind of place. But that activity is down, and as a result, we have millions of dollars of shortfall in infrastructure and maintenance operations for that, as well as rippling effects to the city of Morro Bay itself. And I also know from the research I did on the book, Solve Climate Change Now, that we face a real challenge with regard to climate change. We need to do everything we can in the near term and long term to turn that around, so that we have not only a renewable energy future, but a healthy climate for all of us to enjoy. And I'm aware that our area has some valuable wind resources and valuable transmission resources that can be part of the future. And in looking at the whole issue of offshore wind, I'm, it brings to mind my experience as advisor on the development of the Topaz Solar Farm, another large-scale project out in the eastern part of the county, where there were also a lot of concerns from the community and from environmentalists and others about the potential impacts. And I was really struck in that experience by how, working with the agencies, working with the scientific studies that evolved over multiple years, and it took that long to evaluate some of the issues, really got shaped into a project that the community supported that was good for the local environment and good for the economy. Well, I'm looking at, you know, how do we look at this whole opportunity and challenge of offshore wind in our community? And I, three things come to mind. First is, let's focus on the facts rather than the fears. While it's appropriate to have lots of concerns, fixating on our fears doesn't bring forth our best thinking. It really gets us lodged and set in our thoughts and ways. Let's not rush to judgment when there are going to be very detailed scientific studies coming forward. It's going to take time, but they're going to tune them to what's really happening here versus what the fears and experiences may have been elsewhere. Not to diminish those concerns, but just to say, we need something that's really pertinent to us and our situation, and we'll find those out. Second, let's explore the opportunities that are in these challenges. How could there be prospects for a community scaled effort that could be beneficial for our harbors in our community and that we could all enjoy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Winters, 30-year resident in the Saimoval Home Park. Mayor, staff, council, congratulations on your forum yesterday. I couldn't be there because I was here. And that's what I'm talking about tonight, is I was wondering what I should talk about. And when I was checking my recent calendar of events, I realized how many times I'd been in this very room, this very building in the last 15 days. I won't bore you with all of the details, but it started out on Monday night, February 12th, when we had our Monday Night Community Dinner, which was very well-attended. I've been to every one of them in the last three years except for two. One was because there was this flood. And then there was the other time where I had to be in South Carolina. Oh, yuck. But anyhow, I've been here for, from 9:00 to 6:00, every single Monday night for the last three years. I've been attending every single city council meeting for the last six years, except for those mentioned in the above paragraph. And those council meetings, I stay for the whole meeting from beginning to end. I make my speeches, stay for the remainder of the meeting, and sometimes there are very few folks left in the audience, sometimes only me. Last week, Monday night, I did eight hours. I did one meeting on the following night for the planning board, three hours, where we couldn't talk about anything. And the Public Works Advisory Meet, where I was the only one in the audience. That was really weird. I didn't have anything to say, so mark that on your calendars, because that's a first-time thing. Last night, another Monday night dinner, eight hours here, and I'm sorry I missed your, your conference, but. And tonight, here we are again, for the next, maybe four hours? But there's one more meeting here. One more event here, on March 5th, a week from today, Production Day, from 7:30 to 8:00 PM. If you care about your city, county, state, and nation, get out here and vote. If you don't vote, you can't complain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Monique Davis, followed by Rachel Wilson.
Hello, and thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me today, and the Republic. I'm here to speak on the Houseless Solutions, Houseless Solutions. I am houseless. I am also a third-generation native of this county. And I have lived in every city in this county houseless, so I know communities in this area. And what I get from the houseless is a lot of them want to live outside. So my recommendation is to have property well-managed. It would need some sort of a mess hall, a place for them to shower and go to the bathroom. But then they would ultimately be responsible for helping develop the land, giving them the opportunity to grow and learn for themselves, because these are people that come from broken homes, that were not taught to make their beds, or to brush their teeth, or to take care of themselves. These people deserve a chance. And so my purpose here is that I would like to be a huge part of this, even manage a property if it's something that is a reasonable thought, and see what we can do to give them the things that they need to heal and become part of the community, because they are part of the community. They are just broken, and I really want to see them heal and get better and be a stronger structure for the community, because a community is only as strong as its weakest link. So with that said, I really hope that we can work together. I do plan to go to the DSS meeting in March, the third Wednesday. And any meetings with houselessness, I'd like to be involved, and I'd like to get to know whoever would like to touch out and reach out to me. I left my number on that sheet. I would like to be involved and be a part and help find solutions for everybody's problems. Also, I had ideals of some communities have had the homeless either gave them housing or gave them minimal money to pick up the community that they trash. Because I also am very frustrated with the trash. I'm very frustrated with the drug use and the stealing. I am not someone of that nature. I'd like to see a healthier, happier community in harmony. And so nobody has to worry. Nobody has to lock their doors, and everybody can enjoy perspective. These people do, they don't want to live indoors in a home. They really do want to be outside. And then when weather hits, having a huge hall would be a place where they could go inside. One of, there are lots of issues that can happen with all of these things, and some of them are that we have people that need to heal from their drug use and severe trauma that needs to be healed. These are things that need to be addressed and dealt with professionally. These are all things that can be done, and these people can heal and be a very successful part of this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Monique.
Good evening, council. My name is Rachel Wilson, and I went to the Sea Grant Workshop, along with, the city manager was there, Zara was there, and others. And I came out with some interesting information. Next slide, please. If you look at San Luis Obispo County, low income is defined for one person, household $46,600. For a five-person, $71,900. Zara mentioned that most of the wind farm jobs, and I got that as during construction, were in the $40,000 to $50,000 range, the low-income range. It's not thousands of high-paying jobs. Next slide, please. This is the kind of slide we saw at the Cal Poly meeting. A little bit too difficult to analyze due to the size. Next slide, please. So I took a slide that's called Labor Demand on the Operation and Maintenance Phase. This is once it's built. They mentioned 741 total jobs. 228 of them, they didn't define what the salary was. But this is what it came out. 387, or 75% of the jobs were going to be low-income, as defined by the county. 14 jobs were going to be median income, 29 moderate, and 83, or 16%, were above. So let's take, if you look at the slide, and you really can't see where it says wind turbine service technicians, 321. That job will pay $68,000 a year. Again, low for a family. After taxes, that's $52,000 a year. I looked up today, Morro Bay rentals. They had 22. The median price was $3,000. So let's take that $36,000 average rent off. That leaves a family $16,000 in this community for food, clothing, utilities, and transportation. So here's my question. How will 387 low-income jobs affect Morro Bay? Reaches promised high, but the data is showing low. And this is for one wind farm, not for the three. Next slide. The other thing I really had to laugh at was called community benefits. What community benefits means is that the proposal is not going to benefit the community enough, so we're going to do legal bribery. What's the difference between bribery and community benefits? This is what their slide said. What is their purpose? Should they be used as mitigation compensation for impacts? Meaning the impacts are not going to be good for the community. Let's look at it. Should we accept money as compensation for damage to our environment and our tourist industry? Budgets get built around community benefits. What happens when the funding rises up? Think Diablo Canyon. County's in trouble. Money is short-term. Damage to our environment and tourism industry is long-term. Damage to our environment and tourism industry is long-term. So as you look at the facts here, because they was talking about looking at the facts, these are the numbers. Question, how will literally hundreds of low-paying jobs affect Moro Bay? Thank you.
I have no more speaker slips. Public comment is open.
Hello, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members, staff, and residents. My name is Steve Ray. First of all, I must say that all these meetings that have been going on, I've been very pleased to see members of the council, staff members, as well as residents at these meetings. It's always a great sign to see when the leaders of our community are also the learners of our community, because it helps when you learn along with us, and then we can talk on the same level. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I attended the Planning Commission last week, and it was announced by the consultant and by staff that the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report, was going to be released within the next few weeks, and that there was going to be a 60-day public review. It was also mentioned like that in the paper. Well, I have spoken to this council and to the Planning Commission before, and I have strongly, strongly suggested that the review period be 90 days. I have dealt with hundreds of EIRs up and down the coast of California, and anytime you have a complex project like this is, that is so controversial, that 60 days is totally inadequate, 90 days is inadequate, but at least it's a lot better, and that's generally the standard for any major project throughout the state for review. Anything less is cutting the audience short and leads to questions about how fair it has been for the public to review it. And as backing for my suggestion, I would point out how long it's taken professional consultants to actually write it. And then to keep extending it and extending it and extending it over and over and over, because they have to rewrite and review and reanalyze and everything else. Well, if they're having to do that, and they're professionals at this, what do you think is it going to be like for the public? And it also has to be reviewed by all the responsible public agencies out in the state. Well, they're like everybody, every other agency, they're strapped for help, for staff, and it takes a little while for them to get to it, too. So I strongly recommend the 90 days. And speaking of the Environmental Impact Report, you know, looking at the notice of preparation and what information has been publicly available, it seems that there may be some areas that are still deficient, maybe in the review. For instance, it talks about looking at where impacts are going to happen, except I see nothing in there referencing impacts to the water. Keep in mind, we have a national estuary right here that has to be reviewed. When, you know, the batteries catch fire and burn and use toxic materials, when the wind blows offshore and that happens, the wind doesn't stop at the shoreline, it continues out into the water. And we have protected species in the water that need to be concerned with that, too. So I suggest they take another strong look at that, too. With that, thank you very much.
Good evening, Terry Simons, council, staff, and public. I attended most of the meetings that were referred to by council members. I missed yesterday's meeting with Chief Watkins. I have had numerous meetings with Chief Watkins over the issue, the unhoused, mainly because I represent two of the three property owners that own the ditch. And we have worked diligently with the chief for over a year to try to craft a regulatory position that would allow us to vacate those people from the ditch without an overt impact into the community. In our neighborhood, we're beginning to see the first lost souls that have been removed from the ditch, starting to appear, not unexpected, but at least it's a manageable number of people, and they can be dealt with much more effectively than when they're a group down in, out of sight, out of mind. I would like to report that as the property owners involved, we're trying to come to an agreement with Caltrans, who is also the majority property owner of the ditch. They own all the way to the bottom and up into their right-of-way. Our goal is to acquire most of that property up to a reasonable setback from their traveled way, so that we can take over management of all of that. The long-term goal is to extend the undergrounding of the drainage way that exists for most of Quintana. And we're hoping that we will get a positive response from community development and your council, Planning Commission, as we bring that forward. We believe that Caltrans will support it as long as they don't have to pay for it. That's kind of where we are there. There was another issue that suddenly my mind is drawing a blank on, but that's okay. I've said enough. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, staff. My name is Jean Marie Colby. I'd like to address some of the things that Steve Ray talked about and go in just a little more depth. The NOP that was issued on the battery project, the proposed project, indicates the surrounding land uses include Royal Creek and RV Park, temporary lodging facilities, Coleman Park, the Moro Bay Harbor Walk, a doom habitat, the Embarcadero, commercial uses, and so on, never mentions the national estuary. And there's an atlas of sensitive species, it includes 95 sensitive species in this estuary. And we have, as we all know, the Peregrine Falcon Sanctuary, the Great Blue Heron Rookery, the endangered sea otter, the endangered steelhead trout. These all need to be addressed in the EIR. And I'm not really sure if this notice rises to the level that will give that kind of information to the trustee agencies that need to be involved. I have inquired as to who, you know, what, who the responsible and trustee agencies are, state and federal, to find out who was notified. But this is, this is a really big deal, that this is a national estuary, and it seems to be getting overlooked. And because this is an airborne series of hazards. So notifying these agencies, all the appropriate agencies, is really important. It's not, I don't see it in the public records, which agencies have been notified, but Fish and Wildlife should be all over this. This is, you know, this is a very, very special area for its density of these sensitive species. So I ask you to look into that. And also, I agree, this is a very difficult set of issues to address, and for us to have less than 90 days just wouldn't be fair to us as a public. It's a due process issue on both sides, but the consultants have had at least a year, I don't even know how much longer than what they said. And so we should at least get another 30 days from what's been promised to us, because it's going to be a scramble to deal with these issues adequately. Thank you so much.
I don't know if you can do that. I'm Jeff Heller, resident of Moro Bay. I've been coming to so many meetings, I'm being accused by friends and neighbors that I want to run for office again. Just to clarify, I really am happy not being elected official. What you all do is phenomenal, and when I hear you speak, I just am so impressed by what you're doing for the, for the city of Moro Bay. I just want to thank you. I don't feel like I can thank you all enough. Obviously, we have plenty of, plenty of problems to discuss, but you guys are just doing a great job. I'd also like to thank Manager Kimball for jumping into what is arguably one of the most challenging small cities in California to manage. And I don't know exactly what you had to do in your former position, but thank you for staying and being here. You're doing a really excellent job with a city that's pretty rambunctious. Lastly, regardless of the homeless issue, I tell you, I could not be prouder of Chief McCrayne, Chief Watkins, our Public Works Director, and the city in general for what you're doing with a very complicated issue. You know, for a town of 10,000 people, I think, and I'll talk to anybody about this, we're doing more about homelessness here than any city in the county, in my opinion. Know of another city that's doing a better job with what we have in terms of resources and what we're doing? I'd like to hear about it. You've just done a fantastic job, and I want to thank you all for that. Regarding item 9C, I'm not going to stay for that, but I've said in my agenda correspondence, I'm extremely concerned that we have not gotten a piece of that million dollars that's been awarded to pay for consultants to address the issue of Moro Bay possibly being a harbor for a small facility. I think it's remiss that we've been cut out. I don't quite understand the logic. I will continue to talk with Supervisor Gibson or anyone else that you recommend I talk to. This is not right, and I'm not quite sure what the motivation is, but it'd be remiss for us to ignore the potential opportunity of us being a small facility harbor and the benefits that might accrue from that. So got to get to the source of it. Please give me direction, and I will take it from here. Thank you all so much. Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Every morning with breakfast, I peruse eight to 12 different news websites, from the BBC to the Epoch Times in the West, and Al Jazeera and the Electronic Intifada in the East. Every morning, I remind myself of the troubles that plague our world, and for better or worse, the actions that people take in response. Acts of cruelty, hatred, and despair, but also acts of love, kindness, and courage. Yesterday was no different. On nearly every front page, though absent from the front page of the New York Times and the Washington Post, were articles telling of an occurrence, the fear of which is never far from my mind. Aaron Bushnell killed himself in what I consider to be the most egregious form of self-harm, self-immolation. A man is dead, the world will weep, and nothing will change. My early childhood self-education in politics, war, and activism began with an interest in U.S. interventionism in Vietnam. Amidst all the visions of inhumanity, the one most seared into my mind is an image of Thich Kwonduk engulfed in flames. A man died, the world wept, and nothing changed, at least not the things we needed. Less than a decade later, on May 4th, 1970, about 2,000 people gathered, brimming with life and calling for the right to live. Thirteen were shot, four died. The powers that be care not for the dead, but fear the living. Every one of us has a responsibility for that which is done in our name. Tonight, I offer you a lesson in responsibility and compassion. You killed that man. Yes, you did, and so did I. I am my brother's keeper, and though I may never seek to do him harm, I know that the effects of my words and deeds shall rebound far beyond my sight and long past my days on this earth. My act of compassion this evening is not for those that have sacrificed themselves for the innocent victims, but out of pity for everyone present here tonight. I spent many hours wrestling with the idea of perhaps addressing this incident here tonight. And at the very end, I decided against my plan to stand up here with a portable speaker and subject all of you to the sounds of cries of free Palestine devolving into screams of agony. What better example of our problems than the man that watched Bushnell burn down the sights of his pistol? And what better rallying cry than, "I don't need guns, I need fire extinguishers"?
Anyone else for public comment? AGP, do we have any raised hands?
There are no raised hands on the Zoom call.
Betty Winholz, I would like to announce, since this is our last city council before the event, that in this very room on Saturday, March 9th, the React Alliance is hosting a event, and it will begin with a walk down. Nicole Dorfman announced this two weeks ago, and this is the reminder. The pedestrians will walk down to the waterfront, where we will meet a flotilla of fishermen and kayakers who are concerned about the impacts of offshore, oil, I was going to say, offshore wind coming to Moro Bay. Following that, Jill Knight, who I hope all of you know, and two bands following her will be performing throughout the afternoon. There'll be food trucks, there'll be a silent auction, and there'll be a continuous slideshow educating us about what we've learned. I appreciate the comment that was made earlier that we need to stick to the facts, and all of what the React Alliance depends on are articles that we have researched, that others have researched, from scientists across the globe, a lot from Europe, a lot from the East Coast, and several people from Northern California. So we, we feel like we speak with facts, and we would like to share those facts with the community. And that's so, next Saturday, not next Saturday, a week from Saturday, March 9th, high noon in this room. On a different topic, last city council meeting, I asked if you would agendize a letter. If I wasn't clear, maybe I wasn't, but I would like to see the council agendize a letter to AT&amp;T that you're not interested in having them be no longer the fallback utility for people who have landlines. Many people in Moro Bay still have landlines. They've asked the PUC to get rid of the landlines that they are responsible for. So if this city could send a letter to the PUC and say, "We support our residents who have landlines, and we think that that's a fallback position that AT&amp;T needs to maintain", if you would. And in my last few seconds, I would like to also go back to the tree issue, which I raised last week, reminding people that nesting season began February 1st. And, and two days later, I was on Piney Way, and there was a local tree company that was trimming a tree. So I don't know who and how to contact within the city when those kinds of things happen. I know in the past who I've contacted, but we have new personnel now. So maybe I need to get with Mr. Qualick, or I don't know if it comes under planning, because they're still doing code enforcement. But if we could clarify, when we see violations, who we need to contact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I will close public comment. Mr. Qualick, could you give me a direction? Is that your department, or is that Mr. Cauldron's department?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. I didn't hear the first part of the comment, but if there is a tree that's being pruned in the public right-of-way, and a resident has questions about whether that's permitted work, I can certainly be the point of contact for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. With that, we will move on.
Really quick, I, in response to Betty Winholz's comment, I just wanted to let the community know that in San Luis Obispo, on March 14th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at their library, there's going to be a meeting held there, an informational meeting for AT&amp;T regarding that topic. So I apologize for not putting that in my comments earlier, but I want to let you know that you'll have a, you have a chance to be up and close and to speak with them directly.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, perfect. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. For those of you wishing to speak on those two items, public comment is open. AGP, do we have any raised hands?
Madam Mayor, we have no raised hands on, online.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council. I'm going to close public comment and ask if anyone wants to pull either item 7A or 7B. And if none, I will ask for a motion, please.
I'll move approval of items 7A, items, plural, 7A and 7B.
And a second, please. In a second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. With that, we will move on to our public hearing item. Review and adopt final funding recommendations for 2024 Community Development CDB Block Grant Program. And with that, I will turn it over to Community Development Department, please.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Good evening. I'm Michael Cauldron, interim director for Community Development. And the recommendation before the city council tonight is to approve final funding recommendations for Community Development Block Grant for the 2024 season. Now, the city council has already reviewed the preliminary recommendations. That happened December 13th. And as part of the Community Development Block Grant Program, it's administered by HUD, by Housing and Urban Development. At the federal level, they do require two public hearings, and so we're here to satisfy that requirement. A little bit of background about Community Development Block Grants. It's a federal entitlement, and so it's a programmatic grant that's based on population.
I'm going to interrupt the hearing you back there, so if you want to put it a little closer.
So the Community Development Block Grant is a federal entitlement grant, so the funding is based on formula, and we participate with the County of San Luis Obispo as a consortium, as a part of the urban county, and so we make our application to HUD collectively with the rest of the jurisdictions in the county, except for one that doesn't differently. Funding available for 2024 is approximately $51,228. This is significantly less than it's been historically. Community Development Block Grants have resulted in a lot more funding for local agencies, but this is where we are at today with this program. These recommendations, if approved by the city council tonight, will be funded, forwarded to the Board of Supervisors, and then they will be published for 30 days before they are acted on in a public hearing by the board. And so similar to last year, there have been, there were two applications for funding received under the categories Public Services and Public Facilities. And so taking a look at the applications we received and what the recommendations for funding are, the first is for the Five Cities Housing Coalition, and it's a rapid rehousing and homeless prevention program. So this is an application that was made to the entire county, to the county and all the jurisdictions, and so this award amount of $3,500, it represents 15% of our allocation, which is the maximum that can go to these types of social services, and that's just our share, but every jurisdiction in the county will be providing a share based on the amount of money that they have to allocate. In terms of a project award, the city's Public Works Department has submitted application for an ADA upgrade project. This is not full funding for the project, but will help the project get completed. And so it's an important source of funding, and that'll be a project that's carried out by City Public Works. And finally, there is money that comes back to the city for administration, and that money, it's, the county gets two-thirds of it and the city gets a third of it, they really do, the vast majority of the administration, but we get some reimbursement for conducting this hearing and others and the work that we do in support of the program. So the staff recommendation tonight is to fund the request by Five Cities Homeless Coalition, by the Public Works Department, and for city administration costs with 2024 CDBG funding allocation. Total recommendation is $51,228. In addition, we're asking the council to authorize the city manager to make prorata adjustments. Sometimes the actual grant award comes in slightly different than what's projected right now, the $51,228, that might come in $51,229. So we just would like the city manager to have the authority to deal with any difference in the funding amount. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cauldron. Any questions from council? Nope. With that.
One quick question. What is the amount in local funds for, like, I think from Q and E, that are needed to complete this?
Not sure of that project, but I'll ask my colleague over here.
And I'm sorry, you know which one I'm referring to, right? I wasn't, I didn't clarify, but the handicap accessibility one here.
I do. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. Was actually looking that up to double check the budget numbers, so if you'll give me a moment. I believe it's in the $400,000 range. That money's already been allocated, and to my knowledge, we're not seeking any further funding for that project at this time. So if your question is whether we'd be seeking further funding from Q and E, at this time, we don't think we need that, but we have allocated some money from Q and E for it.
Okay, and that was roughly $400,000 from Q and E?
From my recollection.
For, with, and we've gotten, out of that $400,000, we've gotten a $40,000 grant.
And excuse me, I'm.
Sorry, I didn't ask you this ahead of.
You know what? I'm, if I could just have a moment to look it up, I just remembered that we got a grant from SlowCog on that, and that was around the $400,000, so if we could just take a pause.
Yeah, maybe I could ask the other question, which is, I was just curious, what is the other city that doesn't, the only other, the only city that doesn't do this?
Grover Beach.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Grover Beach lies on their own.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Qualick, if you need a few minutes, I'll open public comment. Or, it's a good, perfect, thank you. With that, I'm going to open public comment on this item.
Evening again, Betty Winholtz. I feel like this is a little deja vu from last year at this time because the same two items were asked for and were granted. Last year, you also had the opportunity to end the three-year cycle with the county, and instead you went ahead and said, "Okay, we'll hang with the county for another three years." My suggestion has been to go like Grover because they're the ones that are doing the five-city rehab, quick rehab thing. So they've been very innovative. They've actually addressed homeless situation down there, and what we've been doing is giving our money to the county in hopes that they're doing something, whereas I think we need our money here. For example, at the last city council meeting, you literally gave away $25,000 to the guy that was building the Haslow Project at 41 and Main, a 55-year loan that will be forgiven. Okay? That was on top of a hundred, half a million dollars that they had already received. So I feel like we're giving money away to others when we need to keep it here. So I'm hoping that next year, well, we can't next year, but maybe in 2026 that you don't renew your contract with the county and that you start having our planning director look in-house and see what projects we can do here to keep our money home and help our own people.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on item 8A? AGP?
Madam Mayor, we have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back to council. Mr. Qualick, enough time?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you, Councilmember Landrum, for the question. So what I can find right now, and I apologize, I don't have a complete answer, but from Q and E, we've already allocated $90,000, so not $400,000. Then we have around $90,000 in total, if this amount is approved, from CDBG funds, but we also got a grant from SlowCog, and I think that one was the one that was around $380,000 or $400,000. I just can't find that exact amount at this moment.
Thank you.
So the project will be fully funded at this point?
We hope so.
Okay. No hopes. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Cauldron, thank you for the update. With that, I'll look for a motion, please.
I'd like to motion that, sorry, now I lost it. Dang it.
Councilmember Edwards, you don't need to read the whole recommendation because it's not an ordinance, so it's just the ordinance, the resolution that needs approval and a motion.
So review and adopt? Is that what you're talking about? Sorry. Recommend approval of 15-24. Approving the final funding recommendations for 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds, and forward recommendations to San Luis Obispo County Board of Supervisors for inclusion with the other final funding requests from the Urban County Consortium.
Thank you. And do I have a second, please?
Thank you. I'll second it.
Thank you. And why don't we go ahead and just do a voice vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. With that, we will move on to our business item, 9A. I'm going to take a five-minute break before we start in on our fiscal year report. Five minutes, thank you.
Good move. Right, I do too.
Oh, somebody brought a nice nut goody, I guess.
I love them.
Yes. Do you like these? Do you like these sesame sticks? Okay, there goes. A little bit, but not, not a lot.
No, thank you.
No, okay. I have some apples. I had apples and that at a time.
I know. It takes a little time. Were you, these are just such a long after.
Can I offer you some? I brought this out of the car because I don't want Dolly to find it. Sorry, thank you.
Cindy, did you turn in your gift for the downtown design district? Did you turn in your husband?
And thank you. Thank you for the.
But I got the reminder today. Keep reminding me.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to resume our meeting. Thank you. Hello? I'm going to move on to our business item this evening, Presentation and Discussion of Fiscal Year 2223 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and I will turn it over to our Administrative Services Director, Mr. Conley.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Lindsey Zimmerman from Brown Armstrong, our independent cities, independent auditors, and she's here to present the Fiscal Year 2023 annual financial, comprehensive annual financial report.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule for me to present the audit results. Here's a brief agenda of the items that I will be going over as part of my presentation. I will start with the scope of services. We were hired to perform an audit of the city's financial statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, auditing standards, and government auditing standards. We are also required to. We are also required to communicate to you as those charged with governance with our required communication letter, as well as report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters in accordance with GASS, which is government auditing standards. Just to touch on the highlights of the citywide financials, the items that were subject to testing were almost $420 million worth of the city's citywide assets and deferred outflows of resources. We also tested 209 million of the citywide liabilities and deferred inflows of resources. We touched on and looked at a wide variety of the city's revenues of almost $50 million, as well as looked at in detail almost $34 million in citywide expenses. And this testing covered all of the funds of the city, which included about 28 funds. And with that, year-over-year, the overall increase was about $16.7 million. That is due to the implementation of the water reclamation facilities surcharge for both the water and sewer funds, as well as loan drawdowns. And just to touch on the purpose of an audit, if you haven't been, haven't had the pleasures of being subject to an audit, is to perform an independent and objective assessment of the stewardship of the governmental funds and spending. And that says independent auditors are to come in independently and carefully examine and audit the books, records, accounts, and funds. And audits are essential to government accountability to the public. And to touch on the differences between management and management's responsibilities and auditor's responsibilities, management is actually responsible for the fair presentation of the financials as a whole. They are to ensure that the financials are presented in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United of States. They are to adopt proper accounting policies and ensure that they are properly applied. They're also to ensure and establish and maintain the effectiveness of internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, as well as all major processes throughout the city. And they are designed to prevent and detect fraud throughout the city. Us as independent auditors are to perform an audit in accordance, which I touched on earlier, accounting standards generally accepted in the United of States, as well as government, government auditing standards. And I'm here to communicate to you as those charged with governance. We also take a risk-based approach and ensure that we have assessed all appropriate audit risk over internal controls over financial reporting and compliance over all key areas that we determine to be significant risks. We also look at in detail the fair presentation of the financials as a whole. And here to issue an opinion and render our required communication letters and communicate to you here now. The main areas of audit focus that we determined to be a significant risk area were revenue recognition and management override of controls. Our response to those risk assessments was to perform detailed tests of controls over cash receipts from all, all parts, including initiation, authorization, recording, and reconciliation and reporting. We also performed substantive analytics where we look at the revenues year-over-year ratio analysis. We look at in detail to make sure the revenue is presented properly as a whole. We also did, which I didn't touch on this slide, as we look at state confirmations and county confirmations to verify that those numbers are presented accurately and properly. And then in terms of management override of controls, we do a detailed testing of journal entries to verify that those are properly, properly presented, authorized, and properly supported to make sure that those are, there's no financial statement fraud. We also perform inquiries through walkthroughs through all the financial reporting processes, cash receipts, cash disbursements, payroll, utility billing, all of those fun areas to make sure that there's no inappropriate or unusual activities. And what I touched on earlier is we, we performed the significant walkthroughs through all the areas. Happy to present and get right to the meat of my presentation is we have the results of the audit, which is an unmodified or clean opinion on the financials as a whole. In terms of our report over financial, internal controls, over financial reporting and compliance, happy to report we have no compliance issues. We also found no issues that would rise to the level of a material weakness or significant deficiency, or for that matter, any internal control issues to be reported to you today. And in terms of the remaining required communication items, which we call the SAS 114 letter, the Government Accounting Standards Board, or the GASB, was very busy the last few years, and luckily, we only had to implement one major one this year, which was GASB Statement 96, which was very similar to leases, which was implemented last year, except they wanted everyone to go through all the subscription-based IT arrangements. So all of what happened with the leases happened now with any IT subscriptions that were over-year-old that needed to be properly presented on, in the financials as a whole through various forms. And so that was a fun task that I know I'm sure Emily was very happy to go through. And happy to report that everything went smoothly and is being properly presented in the, in the financials as a whole. In terms of significant estimates and sensitive disclosures, we looked at capital assets and their depreciable lives to make sure that those are being properly presented and calculated. We looked at any material allowances for doubtful accounts in terms of the accounts receivable. We looked at both the existing and new leases, as well as the new subscription arrangements, and made sure all of those inputs were calculated properly. Looked at in detail the net pension liabilities and net OPEB liabilities, and those were based on the actuarial assumptions. Made sure that those were calculated properly and presented properly. Happy to report the rest of these are none or no, so no difficulties with management, no corrected or uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management, and then no other audit findings or issues. We did, at the end of the audit, receive a management representation letter stating the management's responsibility, which the financials are their responsibility, and we come in as independent auditors to render an opinion on them. And then with that, I just also, when I was going to do at the beginning and I forgot, just wanted to say thank you to the staff, to Emily and Steve and their team, that they just did a great job. They were always timely, very responsive, and just, it was a very fluid and I don't want to say easy audit, but just very responsive, very great to work with. So just wanted to say that at the end, too. Like to open up for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for that update, Mr. Conley. Anything else to add?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That I will look to council for questions. Any questions? Councilmember Burton?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess this would kind of be a general question for you. When you are going through the audit process, I guess what my question would be is what is, what would you define as the city's well-being when you're looking at an audit?
Oh, yeah, definitely. So the, actually, last year, I was looking at this on, when I was preparing the, I believe the harbor fund was the only one that was a little bit in the negative. And now all of the funds are in a great position. That we, for governmental accounting, it's the net position or the equity. It's all in a great, great net position and equity position, especially with the increases and the drawdowns and projects that are ongoing. So, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, questions?
Say thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for the good news that you bring. It's nice to see our audit being in such good condition. So, thanks.
Mayor Protem?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
No questions? We're good right now? I'm an open public comment. Don't go far.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, public comment is open on item nine A.
Madam Mayor, Terry Simons, a small point. At a recent council meeting, I'm not sure whether it was the last one or the one before, there was discussion among the council members about returning to local control the outsourced financials that were being done for our transit occupancy situation involving vacation rounds. I would like to hear from our auditor whether they in fact look at outsourced accountings as part of a separate accounting, or whether those get melded in to the city's general accounting. And so the reliance on those outsourced accountings would become basically the burden of the city management team itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on item nine A? AGP, do we have any raised hands?
Madam Mayor, we have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back. Did you want to? Oh, we have one more coming. Nope, we don't. Okay. Did you want to answer that question? Are you able to answer that question? Thank you.
I, I think I understand the question. I believe that the, the financials and the revenue line items are the responsibility overall of management to ensure that those are properly recorded, properly utilizing the right rates, being utilized by the proper, like the controls that we had already tested as part of our cash receipts. So those were probably also subject to part of our cash receipt testing, and we didn't find any issues with those, so. Over to you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. I remember, I do have a comment. I, I want to thank Ms. Zimmerman for your, your report, and I was telling her earlier, it's great to see her in person, because last time, we got to see her on the little screen. It can be a Zoom. So it's always nice in person. But also, I just want to point out, I'm sure anyone who's read the report, but saw the conclusion that in 2021, 2022, the ACFR was awarded a certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting, and that it's been submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration for excellence in finance reporting for this, for, for the 2023. So I think that that's, you know, good luck, and I hope, I hope that does, that receives that award. But I just wanted to say thank you, and I, it, it's a well-done report, and I don't have any questions.
Councilmember Roberts, Councilmember Barton, any comments?
No.
Councilmember Landham, any comments?
No, not right now.
We're at the end.
I know, I'm good. Okay.
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve item nine A, please.
I move to approve item nine A.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to nine B, please. And again, Mr. Conley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Introduce myself again. I'm Steve Conway, the interim admin services director. And I am very happy tonight to be presenting to you the mid-year budget report for fiscal year 2324. I wanted to really, let's see if I can get my clicker to work here. There we go. I've got it. So the mid-year budget report is, is really, our intention is to provide a pretty high-level review of all of our major funds for the, for the city. The general fund, Measure E, Q and E, water, sewer, harbor, transit, and our various other funds. But we're taking it from a high level, and why that's important for our mid-year report is that we have a number of budget amendments that we need to, that we're recommending council approve tonight as part of our mid-year review. And I'll jump right into it. Looking first at our general fund, there's, there's, you, it's a little hard to read, but we are tracking, our revenues are tracking. As of January 31st, we used our actuals, revenues, and expenditures. Those total revenues are tracking at 60% of budget. Our operating expenses in, in the general fund are tracking right at about 58%, which is the percentage you would expect for the end of January. However, we're actually showing in our estimated year-end that we're going to spend a little less than budget. We're going to have some budget savings on our, on our estimated expenditures, and that's because we make a sizable PERS payment for unfunded accrued PERS liability early in the fiscal year. And that, that large amount of around $2 million is paid out, and it's been paid in July, early in the fiscal year. So that, those numbers are already baked into the actuals through January, so we expect there's not going to be a similar payment the rest of the year. So we're actually anticipating some savings in the general fund in regarding to our operating expenses. We have a budget, as you can see, that was adopted where we intended, based on transfers we need to make for our capital program, to use some of our beginning fund balance. We describe that as available fund balance. We had, we had planned on $4.3 million, $4,307,000, which is the fiscal year 24 budgeted use. You can see it's the second to the last line on this first graph or first table. That amount is being, has been transferred. Primarily, that consists of a $3.3 million transfer to the general fund reserve. So that's putting money, it's putting money away in a reserve for the general fund. It's a separate fund. It shows as a transfer out expense, but it's actually just moving money from one fund to another and setting it aside as a reserve. So what, what we're communicating here is that we had planned a $3.8 million total, total use of reserves, of balances, but because of improved revenues and, and savings on the expenditure side, the far-right column indicates that we anticipate that we'll not need to reduce our reserves by that much. We will have $2.9 million use in the general fund, which is a good thing. And that is a positive development for the city, and I'll explain a little bit about how we got there. Looking first at our general fund revenues, our key revenues, those totals, we had an adopted budget of $19.6 million, composed of these various subcategories within the general fund. And we have now looked at all of those various categories, and there's a lot of detail within each of these categories and a number of these categories. For instance, you know, charges for services and that sort of thing, fines and forfeitures, those types of revenues have various accounts, and staff has analyzed each of those accounts, and we now are estimating that we will have approximately $19.8 million of revenue. So we're exceeding our adopted budget, and that's always a good thing from a finance director's point of view. You always want to hopefully beat that, and we did, or it looks like we will, based on the revenue trends and the analysis that we've done. And then on the expense side, we had a $23.5 million adopted budget, and we are, and this is across our categories. They're described here as, you know, personnel, supplies, other services, contractual services, that sort of thing. We had a $23.5 million adopted budget, and when staff looked at each of the line items of expense in the general fund across all the departments, we're now predicting that we'll have approximately $21.7 million of expense. We're coming in under budget on the expenditure side. Why that is important is because tonight, in front of the council, you have before you some budget amendments that we would like council to approve and that we're recommending for approval. So we had an adopted budget of $19,594. We are now recommending an increase in revenue budget by $615,000 to $20.2 million. And on the expenditure side, as I mentioned, we had a $23.5 million budget. We're adding approximately $800,000 of new expenditures, of which we do not have sufficient revenue. We, a lot of times, will have a new expenditure and we'll have a new grant revenue that matches it. In this case, what's before you tonight, we do not have that in all of its entirety. We have $158,000 of, of, of expenditure increase that we don't have an identified new revenue for. So we are going to be using those savings that I So we are going to be using those savings that I've pointed out why it was important to do that work, to look at how we're going to finish the year, because that will give us some budget savings that we will have if council were to approve these budget amendments, which we're recommending happen. And I would like to take maybe questions, fun by fun, as I talk these. So if council has any questions regarding general fund, that would be great to get those now before I move on to.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Any questions for Mr. Conway right now? Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. I appreciate you answering questions, you know, prior to this meeting, but also answering the question I'm about to ask. I noticed on, well, on mine, it's on table seven. It's the general fund expenditures by expense type, 2021 to current. Regarding the personnel services and services in general, there's a significant estimated decrease of almost $1 million in each of those categories. And if you could just kind of explain why there's such a low amount expected compared to what we budgeted for?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Ford. We looked at, we looked at each department, especially general fund departments with personnel in the general fund. And as city may be aware, there's a number of staff vacancies that have occurred this fiscal year. When someone's not in a position, of course, there's no salary or benefits paid out, even though there was an adopted budget, assuming a full-time person in that position, there's going to be savings from that, from that aspect. There's also savings that will occur based on the fact that we took the payroll budgets. We took, we had, I believe, we had payrolls through February 2nd of this, of 2024. We were able to trend those and take those out for the remaining pay periods of the year. And through both staff vacancies and the trends of current spending that we're, that we are spending on our staff, that is the, we did this analysis for each department and each key area of service delivery, and those are the final numbers we're coming in, we're coming into at this time. Of course, some areas were difficult for us. We have some variability in our overtime in our police and fire units. We used an average of what we've, we don't know what the wildfire season will bring and that sort of thing. So this is a point in time estimate, but it is, there were, there were some significant savings there. And, but I believe that, you know, this is not unusual. I mean, a lot of cities, if you, we do not have a vacancy factor factored into our budget. So we assume that all positions are filled and all filled for the entire fiscal year. So when you compare the estimated against the adopted, that's where you'll see some savings. And I also didn't really, I did not point out, but it's new this year for staff to actually provide this estimated column. This is a new thing, a new, a new feature, I would say, for the mid-year. We wanted council to have that information so that when it did decide to hopefully recommend a budget adjustment, it had, it could reasonably expect that there are savings available to fund this $158,000 I pointed out that did not have a matching revenue source.
I really appreciate that well thought-out response. Thank you so much. And I really, I want to also thank you, since you did point out that that is a new category, that estimation, that it is truly helpful when looking through, looking through the budget. It really, I appreciate that addition. Thank you. I don't have any further questions right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Roberts, questions right now?
Yeah, actually, this is going to be, hopefully, this is the right timing, but this is going to be with regard to the capital improvement plan. And if I may speak to you, Mr. Qualick. I know that during our CFAC meeting, it was noticed that there were a couple bumps in numbers, and essentially, we kind of discussed that these are used as placeholders. Is that, do you recall that? And I think that this kind of speaks to the understanding that projects will need matching funds if we go for grants, that kind of thing. Do you remember this conversation?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. I think what we were referring to is a couple of the plans that Public Works Department has already or will prepare based on the budget. For example, active transportation plan or the LRSP, the local road safety plan. The idea behind those plans, of course, is then to build out improvements based on those plans. And so we built in, into budget forecasts, some dollar amount per year for both of those plans. The idea is that we would seek grant funding for projects that come out of those plans, and then some of that grant funding may require match monies from the city. And so the intention is to use those budget amounts for match. And so I don't remember the exact figures that we talked about, but that was the idea behind those.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think, I know that during the CFAC meeting, Mr. Conway, we also, I'm sorry, I got a lot of input from that meeting, and I really appreciate staff working with CFAC and the review of this budget. So something else that was mentioned was the true level of the reserve fund. And we've spoken a little bit to this. I was wondering if you could just kind of let the community know. Right now, we're sitting at around a 33%. Could you kind of give us a little bit, what is the norm for a city of our size or what's recommended, et cetera?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Edwards. As of, as of, as of our estimate for the end of this fiscal year, we actually will be anticipating total reserves in the general fund. And general fund, exclusively the general fund, not combining the Q and E fund, which would be, give us a different, a different figure. But we are, we are close to 50% reserves, actually, total reserves. The required minimum reserve is 33% under the general fund policy. And in answer to your question, we, we, I feel that, you know, generally, GFWA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends approximately four months of operation, operating, operating sources of revenue be kept in reserve in case of major catastrophe, earthquake, that's any very major unprecedented event or unanticipated event. And our level at 33% is very, very, very healthy, very, very, it's very financially very healthy. It may be possible, though, that it could be adjusted because, you know, some cities, oh, for instance, a major city in the Bay Area, San Jose, has around a 15% reserve, as an example. Much, much bigger city, much more diverse revenue source, all that, all that being said, but a 33% level. We anticipate on our five-year plan that though we're close to 50% now in total reserves, we will be dropping down to the minimum, assuming, assuming our expenditure trends and revenue trends we have, just in the general fund, we'll be at that 33% level in about four years, four to five years. So we'll be at the minimum level. So if we were ever to adjust the minimum, we would possibly have more flexibility for other uses of those monies. Staff intends to do a detailed analysis of what we think, based on the city's history, of what is really the most required and necessary amount of reserve that we would recommend to council. So staff may be bringing that back at a future point to say, we have a minimum of 33%, but however, we have a different target that we might recommend to council as, as a potential. But that has not been determined yet.
Thank you. I know there was reference to a possible risk management study.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
It's called risk-based reserve approach.
Thank you. Questions, Councilmember Barton?
I fell on a particular line item here that I thought was interesting, and it's pickleball court resurfacing, and then it says donations. So there's obviously been some community input. And so I'm looking at this and seeing that it's a one-time expenditure, and I'm just wondering, are we looking forward to this, like this, during this coming year? Is that?
We did receive a community, community support for pickleball resurfacing, and I'll let our public works director talk about, I don't know when that's coming online in terms of the actual improvement, if I'm understanding your question, Councilmember.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Barton. And I apologize, if we're talking about the pickleball resurfacing, that's already been completed.
Oh, great.
That was completed maybe two or three weeks ago.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
And I think part of it was, it was funded through donations, correct?
Yes, it was funded through the Morbe Active Adults Group.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
I just wanted to clarify that, follow up on what Councilmember Edwards was asking, and just make sure that I'm clear. We talked about this earlier, and I think I am, that our actual reserves are over 50%.
They are actually estimated to be right at, right at around 49%.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, that's right, because that number, right, that confused me. And, and our minimum is 33%. Also, I wanted to add, or I was curious, well, one thing, is the county ever audited to ensure that the property taxes numbers are accurate? Like, does that ever happen? Because that is our biggest source of revenue.
I believe the county of San Luis, San Luis Obispo is audited by an independent auditor, as any California governmental entity would likely be subject to audit. I'm not really personally familiar with all their audit procedures, but I'm sure the assessor's office is, is audited because that's a, they assess the, they assess the tax revenue, or the appropriate amount of tax revenue that should be charged to a resident, you know, in the county, so, or a property owner.
Thank you. And then with the second largest revenue source, which is TOT, is there, you know, since it's been found that we, there's potentially missing revenue from that, that, it seems like it's a really, I don't know, it just jumps out at me, it's a really good thing to pursue code enforcement with the TOT, especially with regards to short-term rentals?
Yes, we, we have formed at CFAC committee that in finance, we have been able to obtain data from our HDL, from our vendor, that we can now download and buy. We also have a matching index between the business license permit and the street address of the property, and we will be able to determine whether or not the proper minimum fee has been paid, or if there's been any activity, and we'll likely be able to, we're training staff now to be able to work with our vendor to say, we've identified certain properties where there appears to be no activity, and alert them to start to investigate why we have not received, you know, revenues. And this is a new thing that we're very happy that we've been able to get from our vendor.
Oh, that's great. And also, another issue was the illegal ones. And is there a path to making that work better?
I think in the finance, and we would only have the legal ones, because they're the ones that have gone through the permitting process. In terms of the illegal ones, I'll let our community development director speak to that.
Thank you, counsel. Staff actually met today to talk about this topic because there's correspondence on it, and it's a big issue for all jurisdictions to make sure you're collecting the proper amount of transient occupancy tax. And it's, it tends to be harder with the short-term rentals because the people aren't as used as, you know, hotel operators in terms of billing those out, and especially when they're individually owned properties as opposed to company. And so we, in community development, code enforcement, are in the process of establishing, launched essentially, a process to establish a new application procedure for short-term rentals to make sure that there is alignment between short-term rentals that get business licenses versus ones that go through the ordinance process of having an inspection and proper application. And so right now, we're, as Mr. Conway indicated, we're using different softwares to gather that information, and those softwares don't speak to each other perfectly. So in code enforcement, they use, Post Compliance is the brand name of the software, and finance uses HDL. And we need to work with the, both of those vendors to see if we can get some alignment and better information so that we can be more effective on the enforcement side. That is a work in progress, and it's, it's not just a work in progress here, it's an ongoing thing for jurisdictions. Top of.
Okay. And I think at some point, staff will bring that back to us. I think that was, that's supposed to happen at some point anyways.
Like a progress report?
Yeah, or so, or some kind of report on, on that, as we've had a conversation about that before, earlier, before you, you were here.
Okay.
And then, but last question was, I was curious, why the debt service in 2023 was so much more?
Excuse me. That was a loan that was fully, that was the final payment on a loan that was paid off. There was no more. That's good news.
Yeah, that is good.
Like when you bank your last mortgage payment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to continue with that, Mr. Conway?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So moving on, we did have a CFAC meeting a few weeks ago, and we went over our measure, measure Q and E. We refer to it as Measure E because now the state of California, they track it as only Measure E revenues. At this, it's California Department of Tax Fee Administration, and they, we confirmed with them that they refer to it now as Measure E. Measure Q is, has been, revenue source has been declining pretty significantly. But we are happy to report here that we also are estimating a small decrease in expense for the year. We had a $5.7 million adopted budget, including our transfers, and we're anticipating about a $5.5 million of actual expense. And that means that we have improved our estimated budget available from a budget amount we've anticipated of $85,000 to $223,000 for the year. And this lower budget amount was actually in a very intentional, the CFAC committee wanted those CFAC, those measure Q and E revenues to be spent, they were, had been, we did have some fund balance in that fund, and the committee had asked staff to make sure that those funds get put to use. And so those drawdowns were intentional. We have no recommended, at this time, no recommended budget amendments to the Measure E, to the Measure E funding. Also, looking at our enterprise funds, they are all tracking accordingly, according to the adopted budget. These are, these are areas, I will let council know that we have more work to do in terms of the actual line-by-line analysis of revenue and expense on each of our major enterprise funds. Those, those are still work to be done, and we'll do that work prior to the adopted budget discussions for the fiscal year 25, 24, 25. But just looking at a high-level view of our enterprise funds, we appear to be on track and are not recommending, we only have one budget amendment that we're recommending, and that's a $20,000 transit fund balance to purchase a new bus. And then we have several budget amendments recommended to recognize harbor grants, but they have matching revenues. The only, a small increase to revenues of $2,000 for some of the grant revenues that we're recognizing, but nothing really material that we wanted to, that are requested in terms of large dollar amounts or anything. But looking at our near-term outlook for the fiscal outlook for the city, our major revenues that we've, that we've analyzed and looked at for this fiscal year, they, they remain relatively flat with just modest increases. Property tax, we just received county information that for 2425, they're anticipating a 4% growth, which is good for our property tax, and that's built into this, into our mid-year budget estimates. As, as, as has been mentioned in prior years, we have salaries and pension costs that are pose a significant challenge for the city. That remains so. We already have completed a market survey of various positions, and we are below upmarket in this local, in the survey with other local competing government agencies for similar positions. And we also have upcoming union and meet and confer with our, the city's various bargaining units that must be met with, and those will remain as a challenge for staff to deal with, and especially from a fiscal perspective. And we have continuing And we have continuing storm recovery and CIP challenges, we would like to, of course, fund all of our, as much as possible, our storm recovery and also all the capital improvement plan, our capital improvements that we, the city needs to, needs to make. And on the long-term, uh, our long-term fiscal outlook is that, you know, we, if you, uh, there are attachments Council has to the report that have five-year projections out through 28, 29, and there are, uh, continuing challenges that will need to be addressed where we are showing, uh, shortfalls, and those mainly occur in the, in the area where we, where we have money from our operating budget that we use to fund, uh, this is both in Q and E and in, uh, and the general fund where there's excess, any of the excess revenue above operating expense we use for capital programs or fund balance, and, uh, those, uh, right now with our revenue trends, we're, we're not able to sustain the planned capital improvements that, that we had hoped to be able to, to accommodate in our budget, so those remain, uh, those remain inadequate, and we're projecting, and we need to look at various options on how we can improve that situation. Um, and CFAC committee made a number of recommendations, I'll get to those in a minute, uh, but, uh, everyone is seeing that there are some future challenges out there. The other thing we're going to be looking at is a risk-based reserve strategy. Uh, as mentioned pre, prior, we have a 33% minimum, uh, emergency reserve for the general fund and Q and E, and we, uh, would like to look at that and do a risk-based analysis on that, and, uh, GFOA has given us a framework, a lot of cities are using for that analysis. Staff's going to start that work, and we'll hope to be able to come back with, to Council with a, a good strategy on what we think is the most appropriate reserve level for the general fund and the, uh, Q and E funds combined, and that work is yet to come. Uh, I would also like to point out that in, uh, as I mentioned a few weeks ago, we had a CFAC meeting and they, uh, had a chance to see the mid-year draft report, they voted unanimously four to zero, we had one absent to recommend approval of the budget adjustments that you have before you tonight, um, they also expressed a desire to investigate some alternative revenue sources or strategies to, to increase our, the city's existing revenues, and that's actually going to be a future agenda item that they reckon, they would like to, to have, uh, with the CFAC, uh, and possibly a subcommittee to, uh, to be established to, um, perform more research on what might be some great ideas in that regard. Uh, the committee, uh, supported the, uh, potential need to look at our reserve policies also, as mentioned, but, as mentioned earlier, and, um, I think they also reiterated the very high importance of the capital program that we would like to keep funding and its importance in terms of the pavement program. We need to have sufficient revenues to keep the, uh, pavement condition index and, and many other infrastructure capital improvements that the city hopes to maintain, and, uh, and those are all, um, some, very dependent on the revenue streams that the city has. So that is the conclusion of my report, I would ask Council to please, uh, approve their mid-year budget recom, uh, recommendations as contained in the report, and I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, and thank you to the, um, staff and Measure Q, or excuse me, the, um, Citizens Finance Committee, I want to call them Major Q, they're not Citizens Finance Oversight Committee, thank you. Uh, any more questions, I'll look to my right first, any more questions before we go to public comment? Nope, nope, left, nope, everyone's good. With that, I will open public comment on this item. I do not have a speaker slip.
Evening, Terry Simons, um, speaking through table eight, general fund expenditures by department, not real clear to me in regards to community development, whether those are internal expenses or whether they include the expenses of subcontractors. I went to the planning commission meeting last week, and it was very clear at the end of that meeting that the work, the consultant work that has theoretically been nearly completed for the master plan of the best proposal, or the, uh, everything but the best proposal, master plan, is going back to the drawing board per the planning commission's rec, recommendation and direction, so I suspect that there's going to be some revenue issues there. My concern is, is that, as was related to, in the meeting, there seems to be a requirement that the master plan be completed prior to the completion of the best project. Now, staff at the time, and admittedly we're in transition between directorships, was making the point that we can't complete the work on the Vistra's, um, EIR without the master plan in place, uh, but the master plan is lagging, so the question becomes, how are we going to move forward with that, and if so, are we going to push the master plan consultant and their work to meet the demands and requirements of the planning commission, or are we simply going to delay the, uh, certification, if you will, of the best EIR? Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Nicole Dorfman. Um, I just wanted to, to comment on the, uh, conversation about short-term, uh, vacation rentals, this is something that I've been looking into, um, had some help from Dana Swanson, um, with the public records request around HDL, and one of the things I noticed in the, um, the documents I received is there seems to be a consistent number, um, that's about 30%, if I remember correctly, I wasn't planning to speak on this, but, uh, 30% of listings, um, through Airbnb and VRBO, wherever they get their information from, that they said they didn't know if they were compliant or not, it's un, unknown because the listings don't have an address. And for me, I felt like, well, there, there's an easy fix, somebody just goes and makes a reservation, and, and they get an address. Um, and if it's 33%, that, that's a big number, or 30%, or even 25%, that, that's quite a large number. Um, and I'm sure we could have some volunteers here that would be willing to make reservations. And who are these people, um, who are not compliant, who are trying to, um, you know, not provide the city, um, with their fair share? And not only does it not provide the city with the fair share, but it robs other businesses who are, like many of our hotels, um, who don't get that business, or other vacation rentals who are, uh, playing by the rules. So, uh, just wanted to put that out there as one potential, and, and I know we have volunteers who probably love to do that, actually, I'd be happy to volunteer, so thank you.
Lady Winholz, um, I want to speak to the reserve being at almost 50%, um, I think that's pretty obscene when we have so many needs in our town, um, particularly the paving, particularly the capital projects, particularly paying down the piers, so I'm really hoping that you bring that back down to 33% sooner rather than later, that you need to spend that money. And, and, um, at the time that you decide to examine whether even 33% is too high, so anything between 33 and 45, or 49, in my mind, has to be spent. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP?
Metta Mayor, we have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to Council. Um, thank you, I, I think, um, in response to that question about HDL, I think that was identified this evening, that there's some failures there, and I appreciate that both community development and finance are both, um, looking at avenues to try and, and bring that current, I think that'll help us, and you're right, everybody should be on the same playing field, contributing financially. Uh, questions or comments, looking to my left.
Um, I don't have any questions, so I'll, um, I, I, first of all, I want to apologize to Emily Conrad and Steve Conway for not congratulating you on our last item on having such an excellent audit, so my epic fail there in my comments, so I apologize for that. And then regarding this item, um, again, great job, Mr. Conway, um, and also to Melissa Green, but, um, I just want to thank Mr. Conway for taking time and meeting with Councilmembers and answering our questions, and I feel like this is a really wonderful report, this is now, I've been a part of a few of these, and I feel like they just keep getting better, and, um, and again, just to reiterate the, uh, my appreciation for the estimation, um, I think that really helps us in our decision-making, when you do come to us, as you mentioned, with asks for increases in the budget, we have a lot more information, um, to go from, um, and I love that you have such great experience that I trust that estimation. And anyway, I know it's a work in progress, but I really, um, I just want to thank you for that, and so that's just my comments, and we have a lot of great staff members and interns that are working hard for our city, and I appreciate it.
Councilmember, it worked.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, Mr. Conway and, and your staff, Emily and Melissa, that, um, you know, it, working with our very engaged community, um, uh, leadership in CFAC, and they have lots of questions, and you guys were so good at fielding them, and it was such a huge, vast difference, the meeting from January 16th to the last one, I really, really appreciated it, took lots of notes, and I did see a lot of input going back and forth, patience and construction, you know, very constructive, um, ideas, um, exchanging there, and I think it's a good benefit, at least I found it to be, so thank you again for doing that for us.
Councilmember Barton?
Um, I want to thank you for the, um, the way in which this is presented, it's different than I've seen in, uh, previous years, and, um, getting an opportunity to, um, look at the numbers and see how, uh, how we're presenting them, how we're working on them to get to a, a point where we know, um, even better than we know now, what, what the numbers are going to be later, um, and so anyway, I just want to thank you for that.
Well, I, I appreciate this too, but I'm going to stick to the business. Um, I have a question about, um, I've, uh, so with the, for the budget, for the city attorney, um, can you clarify, it's at 43% spent, so could you clarify that for us?
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. This is one area, when, uh, when we, uh, had completed our report and our analysis, we, of course, had, uh, hard data through, uh, January 31, however, you know, uh, as, uh, as happens sometimes, in the best, uh, in the best of all worlds, we thought we had most of the information we needed, however, there were some outstanding, um, legal invoices that were still in the pipeline, and, uh, we weren't aware of those, so we, uh, that is one area that we did, uh, we, if we were, when we bring this back with our refinements prior to adopted budget for this year, that is one area that likely we will have a higher estimate on the legal budget, because we had some, uh, we did not have some invoices posted against January 31 that, uh, were still in the pipeline and had, they were going through an approval process, and, uh, that's, uh, an area that we're going to be working with the departments to help finance staff be aware that, oh, there are some things that haven't hit the books yet, but they are in an approval process, and we'll, uh, work on that to make sure that we can, uh, track those a little better. This is sort of a learning curve, this is the first year we've done estimates, so, uh, staff is just really getting their feet wet in terms of trying to help the departments estimate where they're going to be at a particular point in time and how they're going to finish the year, so this is all new work that we're doing, so it's, and it's really good work, and I'm, I'm, I know the staff's very excited, I know in finance, very excited about it. We do, we also have on some areas, uh, areas of revenue that we, uh, that we, uh, think will offset the, the, the increase in legal, so it's, we viewed it as a little bit of a trade-off, but we're going to refine it more, uh, there's going to be another version of this coming out in about a month, about two months.
Okay, and just, just for, um, clarity, so for 2023, the actual number is 500,00, roughly 500,000, correct?
Uh, let me take a look at that, I'm just going down the list here in legal, uh, where are you pulling that from? I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Um, I think it's table eight, I'm, um...
Table eight? Okay, I'm looking, I'm just not seeing it. Uh, city, I do see it now. Yes, the, it was approximately, uh, we're showing an actual, uh, for that fiscal, for the, uh, last fiscal year, 500,000, 501,000.
Okay, and, and that's just, that's just one, um, section of legal, that's not our entire legal expenditures, though, for that year?
Uh, that is the general fund legal expense, the charge to the general fund programs.
Okay, because I, I, um, I had asked, and Melissa sent me, um, a chart that showed, and I just wanted to be clear that the total in legal expenditures, um, for 2022, 2023 is 817,000.
Yeah, and I, I believe the difference would be those are costs that are directly attributable to work, legal work done for the various enterprise funds like harbor or...
Okay.
Yeah, and, and those amounts would need to be charged to those various services because you would need to appropriately link those legal costs with the cost of that service, so that's why they're...
Right, I just think it's an important, um, thing to point out, so I wanted to make that distinction.
Councilmember Landrum, uh, I could address some of the questions you have here, this is for general fund, and, uh, I actually noticed these numbers here when I looked at this report after it was published, and, um, it seemed that this was low, and so I talked to staff about this. Um, these numbers here for, through January 31st, I don't think it captures the December or January invoices that came into the city, um, and so it was estimated that for, uh, this fiscal year, the budget was 483, uh, it's inaccurate to say that the estimate is going to be 352, that's not going to be the case. Um, we've had a lot of extra legal work this year we've had to do, uh, we spent a lot of time on the no camping ordinance, for one, we've had a lot of infrastructure issues we've had to deal with due to storm issues, we've had some boats down at the harbor that we've had to do legal issues on, um, we've had multiple litigation issues that have come up, uh, and it's true, this is just the general fund, we also have quite a bit of legal services that are funded through reimbursement agreements, the biggest one being the best, uh, that's entirely paid for by the applicant, and we made sure that when they applied three years ago, that we had a reimbursement agreement set up. Um, so when you look at the entire legal budget, um, there's also the WORF, and hopefully the WORF items are going to be wrapping up soon, um, but yeah, to be absolutely clear, this is the general fund. Uh, if you look at the total legal invoices, uh, it's definitely not just this, and I do hope that we're going to be on track for the 483 for this year, and if we're not, then I certainly will be able to talk about the work that we were asked to do because the city needed the work done, uh, from the legal team, so, um, certainly, uh, willing to answer any questions you have about that.
Thank you, well, I, this is the first I've heard that there's, um, another reimbursement, um, contract besides Vistra, I didn't know about...
No, Vistra is the big one, um, one of the things that my office has been doing, uh, is to make sure the city saves money, is that we've been, I suggested that what we should be doing is reimbursement agreements for other planning projects, because a lot of cities throughout the state of California, when an applicant has a big development project, they actually have the applicant cover legal costs, the city historically has never done that, for whatever reasons. Uh, Vistra was the first time that we'd done that, so I suggested that we start doing that for projects moving forward. Um, we had to spend a bit of money to come up with a reimbursement template, that also will be reflected in the budget, but moving forward for big projects, like for example, 3300 Panorama, the applicant will be paying for legal fees, and also I do expect that we're going to be getting more bang for the buck from applicants rather than having a flat fee, but we're going to be doing time and materials, so, um, there's a lot of ways that we can lower city costs, especially on planning and development, and, um, I'm excited that staff's working with my office on doing that, because at the end of the day, it saves the city money.
Well, that's, that's, um, my interest, and, um, having had the town hall meeting on, on capital projects and, um, contracting and, um, um, all of that, and it, it just, this is, this is another issue where if you, um, I think it's important to look at in-house versus, you know, contracting, because that, that's a huge number for our city, so, I, I'm, I'm glad that, um, we were able to talk about that, thank you.
Thank you, I'm just going to make a couple comments, and, um, I think we've all acknowledged all the city staff, um, but I would be remiss if I did not include our city manager who, um, leads that team, and I will say that from, uh, the day one of Ms. Kimball arriving here six months ago, I've seen the budget sitting on her desk non-stop as she's gone through it, and so, um, thank you for the contributions and leadership on that, uh, it is greatly appreciated. Um, a couple things... Um, a couple of things and, and, um, I just mentioned them earlier. And I know as we, uh, move into our budget season, I hope that we will have a chance to talk about those. And one of them was brought up by a speaker tonight, but it was something I actually asked, uh, finance earlier and Mr. Conway earlier was about, uh, what's our return on investment for our, um, reserves? And, and how is that best utilized, um, when we have those reserves? And one of the things I asked was about paying down on our CalPERS. Um, and it was, do we pay interest on it? And the answer was yes. So, um, there are a lot of options for capital projects, but we also have debt that we need to consider paying down on. And if we can lower our, um, levels there, there can be a lot of opportunity provided back. Also, uh, finance is looking at, um, investment policies and how we do investments. We did very well when you look at our investments that have increased. And I appreciate the work that the finance team's done. But I would say that, you know, we still left a lot of money on the table. Um, CDs are limited to 250,000. And, um, hopefully we'll look at some other things like T bills and things like that in the short term where, um, they're paying a higher reserve. But again, it goes back to, um, paying down the CalPERS and saving that interest too. So thank you for all the work. Thank you for the information tonight. And if we don't have anything else, I'll ask for a motion on this item. Um, with the two recommended actions.
Okay, I will, there's, okay, there's two here. All right, so I move that we approve, do we need to approve the, the fiscal year mid-year budget report first? And then approve the, adopt the resolution? Or can we just adopt the resolution?
It's just the, uh, adopt the resolution. The receipt is.
Okay, I can use by the two things I had to, okay. All right, so I move that we adopt resolution number 16 dash 24, authorizing the attached budget amendments to the mid 2023, 2024 mid-year budget report. I'll second it.
Thank you. And I will just do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries 5-0. With that, we will move on to our last item of the evening. And this will be, uh, City Manager Kimball and Harbor Director Shafon. And this will be our offshore wind update notice.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members. Ted Shafon, Harbor Director, um, tonight. Um, staff is recommending that council acknowledge and review the responses to the San Luis Obispo County Notice of Funding Availability for potential offshore wind development on the central coast and provide input on additions, deletions and/or edits. Uh, but before we do that, if you would allow me five minutes to go a little deeper into the conversation as to why we're here and, and why we're doing it at this point in time. Ever since, uh, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management issued the three lease sites off the coast of Maure Bay in December of 2022, the city has been very active in trying to educate ourselves in understanding the offshore wind industry as it relates to Maure Bay. Since that time, staff and several council members have been heavily engaged in conferences related to offshore wind, meetings and communications with federal officials and agencies, state officials and agencies, county officials and agencies. We have met with leaseholders in person via Zoom. We've hosted several site visits. Um, we have met with, um, many of the consultants and contractors in person and via Zoom. And however, all of this activity and dedicated staff time has led to very little information that can be brought back to council and our community regarding offshore wind impacts to our harbor and bay. During early fall of 2023, staff and our council subcommittee on offshore wind began pursuing direct funding to support additional staff and/or consultants who could provide expertise on the impacts offshore wind will have on our local community. There were several contacts and meetings with federal agencies, including staff from Congressman Carver Hall's office and state agencies, including staff from Senator Ladd's office and Assembly Member Addis's office. And through these meetings and contacts, we learned that San Luis Obispo County had received 1.7 million dollars through Assembly Bill 178. Those funds were earmarked for ports and harbors in the county, which specifically is Maure Bay, Port St. Lucie and Cal Poly. The county appropriated $700,000 of that 1.7 million dollars for themselves for staffing and support to offshore wind. We were encouraged by federal and state agencies to make a direct request to San Luis Obispo County for a portion of the remaining 1.1 million dollars. In mid-December 2023, our city manager Kimball made a formal request to the county and received a response indicating the county was preparing a notice of funding for the ports in the county. In early January, just this year, a meeting with state and federal agencies was held. And again, our city made requests for local funding to support our local needs. At this meeting, we were informed that at a future meeting on January 18th, they will discuss in more details how the 1 million dollars will be distributed and the scope of work that that would, that that would fund. However, two days prior to the January 18 meeting, San Luis Obispo County CEO Rebecca Campbell called a special meeting with the city to give us a heads up so that we would not be surprised by the process they intended to take. We were informed the county was not planning to distribute the funds for local discretion. A consulting firm by the name of Mott McDonald had already been selected to perform a study at all of three ports. The county will have the contract and each port will have an opportunity to answer a questionnaire to develop our local scope of work. And that is where we are today. Today, we have received the four questions that the county, um, has proposed so that we can develop a scope of work that we would like, uh, for Mott McDonald to perform, um, in our harbor and bay and city. So I'll take it back to our staff report. The county has intended to award 100% of the funds towards the purpose of supporting, um, this study, which includes Maure Bay, Port St. Louis and Cal Poly. Um, at this point, we do not know how much of the 1 million dollars will be appropriated to Maure Bay. Um, we will be submitting, we, we have already submitted the application as it was due, um, February 23rd. The county has verbally indicated to us that, um, any edits or recommendations that council may bet, may make at this particular meeting, um, we can revise and resubmit. So at that, I'd like to leave it, um, to you for any questions you may have regarding the report and the questions and the answers.
And I would, um, thank you, Director Shafon. I would just clarify that in your comment just now that the portion allocated to Maure Bay's study is not allocated to Maure Bay, which is our concern. It is allocated to Mott McDonald for the study and we can submit, not give us the freedom to choose our own consultant. So thank you. Uh, City Manager Kimball, anything else you want to add to that at this time?
No, not at the time, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, and I, and before we go to, um, council questions, I would just share on our trip to Washington DC, uh, and meeting with our, um, lobbyists as well as Congressman Carver Hall. Um, this has been an ongoing request we've made since the offshore winds, um, summit in November in San Luis Obispo, where we have reached out to our state and federal partners to request funding for the opportunity to hire our own consultant and/or staff member, um, the same as San Luis County is doing and other entities to help guide us through this process. And so, um, this, uh, I'm correct, you, this was submitted because we had a timeline, but we have the opportunity to offer modifications to it after tonight's discussion.
That's correct.
Correct, so thank you. Um, questions? Mayor Protem, would you like to start since you sit on the subcommittee? Or are you good right now with any questions?
No, I can, um, I could speak on this quite, quite a bit. Um, um, one I would like to ask, um, does anyone from staff know what the financial impact of offshore wind could be to Maure Bay? What the benefit would be?
Councilmember Landrum, I don't, I don't think we could answer that question.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Um, um, I, I guess mostly, um, well, is there, do you know of anywhere where it's, it says that the county has to control all of this, this million or one point, actually 1.7 million?
It is my understanding that is the way the contract is going to read. They will have a separate MOU with each agency or each port, uh, one of which will be us. Um, that will be based on, we're told, will be based on our answers. Um, um, we don't know to what degree, um, that that will be, but that will be a contract that we will have with the county. But the county will hold the contract with the consultant.
But there's nowhere specifically where there's language that it says that this is the way it needs to be, that from, that has been given to the county that this is the way that there's to do this. They, they've come up with their own method, basically, right? Or are they mandated to do it this way?
I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
I think that from what I gathered from reading the contracts and the information we received, the county feels its position in receiving the money is that they're responsible for the overseeing of the funds and how it's utilized and that they can't just allocate money according to what my understanding is of their position, that they're the caretakers of this money, period. And that we have to, um, submit and so they have to be accountable. According to what I was told when we had those Zoom meetings, they can't just hand us over money, which I'm not sure why they thought there would not be accountability for it. But that was.
Well, I, I.
That's what we gathered and, you know, as we, we've all sat in on those meetings.
Yeah, Mayor, I think you're right. I do, do recall them indicating that the, the funding, the appropriation was to the county and that the county was taking responsibility for that contract.
Well, when you're dealing with a, an agency like the county that has a hard time dealing with parking lots and, you know, other, other, you know, employees that, that, um, you know, spend money without, um, that they're not supposed to, I, I wonder who is better equipped to manage their own, um, property? And also, um, I wonder, like, what, what is it that the county needs to hire staff for? Have they indicated that with the 700,000?
I've not received any information regarding that.
And then do you know what targeted stakeholder that term means? In their, um, their, their language in there?
What, what page is that on?
Um, um, I don't know, I just have that written down. Um, it was one of the things that they were going to kind of be considering is, they, they called it targeted stakeholders. And they explained it to us as not the public, not the general public, remember? It was, um, specific, like tribes and fishermen. And, um, so it's really, didn't take into consideration the general public. Is how I understood that, is that how you?
I think you're right, um, Councilmember.
It included organized labor also.
Right. I do, I do believe in our, in our answers that we have tried to redirect this consulting study more to what we need, which is true stakeholder engagement, including the stakeholders and residents of our community, um, as well as trying to redirect this from an infrastructure study to an environmental impact study and placing the importance on that as the boundary, uh, not, not where do you place it and how do you build it? But what are the impacts first before any decision is made regarding that?
And the, the environmental impacts, which also would economically potentially affect the city as well, right?
Correct.
And, um, I, I, I looked at your, the early, um, modifications and questions that you, you both had put on there. And I don't know if you had added, um, if there's an, like, if, if there's any consideration of an impact on, you know, Maure Bay has a lot of events down at the harbor. It, is that being evaluated?
I don't think we have it specifically, but I'll let, um, City Manager Kimball.
Thank you, um, Harbor Director and thank, thank you Vice Mayor Landrum. It's vaguely being, it, it's being generically covered under social and economic impact on waterfront. Uh, we can certainly be more, be more specific, talk about the events.
And, and that would also include traffic and parking down there too?
Yes, let me, let me do a word search. I, I recall I put the traffic in their circulation. We, we put a traffic in circulation in the.
And then also what would the effect be on the waterfront master plan that we are, um, planning to do or?
That, that's being, um, that being covered by our response. We, um, are expecting the consultant and the county, uh, hire to review our, all our, um, relevant documents, including the proposed, uh, water master plan where we had one, we had an existing one. And then they, they would, we request them to review those before they, um, as part of the study.
Okay, thank you. That's, um, that's all for right now.
Thank you, questions? Councilmember Burton? Councilmember Roberts, questions?
Sorry, I'm gathering my thoughts here. It's there was, yeah, there, there were quite a few reports to read through and familiarize myself with before looking at this submission. Um, one of which was just what stood out to me in one of the reports with regard to AB 525 done in July 7th of 2023, was the idea that that was a very high level report. It seems to me like a lot of, uh, the work that's been done so far is at high level. Um, and consequently, that's how we were determined as being one of three locations. Um, and so to that end, uh, what struck me was, uh, items on page, I think it was 92 of that particular report. It was kind of item after item after item that was not addressed, details of many of the ones that are aforementioned by Mayor Protem Landrum. So, you know, I, I, I do see, um, what we're kind of butting up against in this ask. And I'm trying to formulate, formulate, put this all together and figure out, you know, are we saying specifically enough what we need to say here? Or is there something missing? Um, and I'm just trying to, one thing that stuck out to me also, um, was the fact that we had, I, I believe, uh, some sort of estimate from RingCon at $24,000. Uh, um, and I don't know if that was to an estimate to kind of do a deep dive for us. Um, could somebody let me know? City Manager, was, was that correct?
I can respond. Councilmember, yes, that is, that is correct. So what, you know, there's a real balance. We're trying to work here because we're not experts in the field ourselves. We're not technical experts. If we go too, um, too deep into it, we then pigeonhole ourselves into activities that they're going to charge for and is going to take away from possibly some of the other activities. We're trying to stay at a high level, but, but with enough information that puts the consultant, um, providing the data that we want to see. Um, it's, it's, um, it's going to be difficult, in my opinion, to, to get too detailed in this because once we do that and it goes in the MOU, it becomes part of the contract. And now we don't have control of that contract. So, um, it's, it's not a perfect scenario for us, but we're hoping to at least get enough detailed information regarding the environmental impacts within our particular harbor, um, for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Shafon. I guess, I mean, part of what I'm trying to get at is, you know, where did we come up with the number 500,000? I just, I don't, yeah, I, I don't, honestly, I wasn't a part of the conversation to know where we came up with 500,000.
It's broken down in there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, but I wasn't a part of the conversation, you know, how we got to this. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is I, I'm seeing mainly the staffing component coming out at. I, I'm seeing mainly the staffing component coming out at me, that we don't have the staffing to handle this. And so I was just wondering, i- is that a body? Is that, what, what, what are we, what are we asking for there? Is that a person? Here, I'm a $500,000. I'm just, I guess I'm just wanting to be more specific.
So the details on, we're looking at $300,000 for city staff time dedicated to engage with the staff time, and it can be one body, or it can be one and a half bodies, or one body plus consultants and so on and so forth. And then $25,000 for education travel conferences. And then there's some other incidental things, and $25,000 for a space to accommodate additional, additional function that we're, we need. And then there's $150,000 for other consultants, lobbyists, the financial advisor, legal advisors, and just people that more on the, being the subject matter, being experts on subject matter. So so that's, that's the breakdown of the $500,000. We, we, we are asking for capacity. I wanted the city council and I, I, I wanted, I wanted everybody to know, everybody know that this is new to us. Offshore wind or battery, these are things are really brand new. They're, they're, they're new initiatives and the city, we do not have any designated personnel here to deal with energy or this, or, or wind. County have, they have designated personnel to, to, to deal with that, and we, we don't, just Ted and I and then our existing staff, and we, we don't believe we are, we're the experts in the field. We, we need the support. So therefore, that's the capacity. It's, you, you, you want to look at it this way. Morro Bay is being called out, being the really important part of the offshore wind, floating offshore wind initiative for both the federal government and the state. However, we do not have any resource, resource to support us to, to, to be, to be a player in the, in this, in this, in this ongoing discussion. And a resource, so therefore, we are asking for funding to, to support ourselves.
Yeah, I also found in the information in the reports important because, and, and why I spoke to being looked at as a location, you know, if, in the reports, it was pretty clear to me at a high level that we were one of the ports, or one of the opportunities sites that was of greatest impact out of the three. So I do understand the need for asking for this. I, I think what I'm just trying to drill down on is if have we covered everything, and I understand that's why we're here. So just discussing.
Councilmember Ford? Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question regarding, so there's three of, three entities that have been identified as, as being a part of the county's what they're looking into. So Morro Bay, Port San Luis, and the Cal Poly Pier, correct? Okay, so my question is, is do the other two entities have staff? Do they have, do they have supportive staff that's able to prepare a sufficient response to this survey? And have you communicated, I guess this question could be for either City Manager or, or Harbor Director. But have we communicated with those other entities to see how they're feeling about this as well?
Councilmember Ford, I did attend the Port San Luis Board meeting regarding their response to the county. And it was, although they indicate they did not have any support, it did appear that it was more technical than the responses we were providing. But again, they appear to be looking at this from an infrastructure standpoint versus an impact standpoint. So their take is a little different than ours. I have not communicated with Cal Poly. But Cal Poly is a pretty big university with pretty big staff and opportunities to, to have technical expertise. I've not seen their response to this. So, you know, again, we, we feel like we're somewhat at a disadvantage. And that's the reason why not only do we need support in this type of study, but we need support for staff to be able to, whether we hire outside consultant to guide us, or whether we hire staff who has expertise in this area.
Okay, that, thank you for answering that. And that's my only question right now. Thank you.
I, I think that, and I would just add that when we discuss hiring, the potential of hiring a staff person or a consultant that can help guide us, this is the challenge because this is such a new industry coming to the West Coast that it's difficult. And most of the people that we're finding that were with the county have gone to some of the wind companies privately, and most of them are versed in energy. Maybe more so than wind, but since these leases were approved and, and I know, you know, some of you have been there since the beginning. I sat at the hearing prior to being elected and, you know, have tried to follow it since that time, and it's been 15 months of learning more about offshore wind than I ever thought I would know in my life, and yet is still extremely insignificant in what we need to have sitting at the table negotiating with multi-billion dollar energy companies. And being able to put our best foot forward and, and advocate for our community. And that's where this request came from, and the idea of bringing it tonight to council was so that we could make sure the five of us and our community, as we have tried all along to make sure that we are transparent about everything we do. And for me, the most important part about this, and, and, you know, everything is about economic opportunities because we know we need it in our harbor, but first and foremost, is about our, our environment and our harbor as being one of 28 estuaries in the nation. And our ecotourism, you know, we have a responsibility to put that at the front, forefront of what we do and our decisions. The three companies, and I would share, as, as Director Shapone said, have looked a lot at Port San Luis because it's open water, and to that I say have at it, but not all of them. And even with that, there's still the idea up and down this coastline from San Simeon in our county down of landing energy through. So there's impacts in all different ways. And they looked at a crew boats originally in and out of here, but that ship sailed already, no pun, and, you know, they've moved on to operations and maintenance, which is 200-plus foot boats, boats that will be designed for this area, but nonetheless, a much greater magnitude than what maybe we had thought in the beginning. So I'm going to open public, yes.
Questions? I would like to know, signing the MOU with the county, is that something that would need to have legal? Look at this?
I would expect so. I have not been asked at this point to be involved in any of this report to council, so I've not reviewed this material for council presentation.
When I hear the term MOU, it just logically, I think you would need to have.
I would assume so, yes.
And then, are there legal fees to date regard with, to do with offshore wind that we've
Yes.
incurred? And also, Mot McDonald, this, this contractor that the county has chosen to do the study, does, do you know if it's, this went out to, to an RFP? Was this a sole sourced contractor? How, do you know how this?
Yeah, Councilmember Landrum, we have not been told anything regarding how that contract was put in place. We, we were not asked to be a part of any analysis of an RFP. We, we, we clearly do not know or understand how that was, how they were selected and why they were selected.
Well, I, I understand that they, they just chose them. This is the, the company that already did the REACH study, but on, on port development, that most, most people have said it was not helpful and actually detrimental. And the county chose this company again to do this further study because they, they told me because they, they were in a hurry and they didn't have time. So.
Yeah, I think I would just add that in the context of this county direction, that they have been working with REACH as a shared partner. And in the meetings that we've had with the county, REACH has been particip, their representative has been participating, so I'm assuming they're utilizing them. I have one speaker slip, and I appreciate all of you being here, staying. I will remind you, please, that this is on item 9C, which is a response to San Luis Obispo County offshore wind notice of funding availability scope of questionnaire. That is the item. Rachel Wilson, and after that, oh, you're already there.
Yes. And I have read so many of these reports, and I want to thank you guys for prioritizing our environment. Next slide, please. Thank you for all who prepared the answers to the county requests for infrastructure requirements. I don't know all of you, but you've done an outstanding job. Thank you. Next slide, please. Of all the offshore wind reports I have read, you are the first to require evaluating environmental before considering infrastructure work. These are your words. And to develop a communication and community engagement strategy. The only change I would request, next slide, please, is that the consultant should consider the environmental impact of ships at least 262 feet long. Right now, I'm going to read out of AB 525 port readiness, because I keep hearing they'll never bring these ships into Morro Bay. Under operations and maintenance, it says, these facilities are required to birth SOVs, not optional, required. So I've been looking for pictures because I'm a picture kind of person. Next slide, please. This is an SOV. It looks like a bathtub toy. Next slide, please. This is the first SOV that is being constructed in the United States for operations and maintenance. It is the Orsted Evo Edison. You think about the Akina that comes in, that its bulb is about 14 feet. This one looks a lot bigger. Next slide, please. The ship is humongous. This is an SOV required for operations and maintenance ports, according to AB 525 and everything else I've read. Next slide, please. There are actually a couple of people on top of this ship. The back holes are for thrusters. This ship is 262 feet long. I have not been able to find the draft. That information is not out there. That's the part that's underwater. But if you just look at that bulb, can you go back one slide? You look at that whole section there, and back another slide. Look, well above that. This is a huge ship. So, thank you so much for prioritizing our environment because this ship does not belong in Morro Bay's harbor. Think about my poor kayak there. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? Again, I'll remind you, this is for the study and funding availability for the scope of work. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm still Steve Lee. You know, since I had COVID, I lost my sense of taste and smell, but, you know, I'm smelling something kind of rotten. Here, I think my smell's coming back all of a sudden here. So what's being asked here is the county and its consultants are going to decide what is best for city and the residents of Morro Bay. Doesn't sound like we're getting a whole lot of choice in what's going to be decided or how it's going to happen. We have a contract that we know nothing about. We have an agreement that is a mystery to us. We have a company that nobody knows anything about. Is there any positive thing in here that I'm missing somewhere? I read in a REACH report recently that, that we're going to have the benefit of all the four types of things that are going to be required in the port here. The benefits being that we will maybe have a couple hundred jobs being paid at poverty level, as Rachel Wilson pointed out earlier this evening. But we're going to have all the impacts, and that's one thing we don't hear much about. The fortunate thing for the people of Morro Bay is that we have a measure on the ballot in November of '24, this coming November, called A24. And now everybody thinks of that as kind of relating to the battery facility. But it actually, the whole purpose of that measure is to allow the citizens of the city to decide for themselves what we want for the city, what we want here, how we want it, under what conditions and everything else. It gives the citizens the right to make this vote on what is best for our city, related to the properties where all of this, these facilities would be placed. The waterside of the Embarcadero from Beach Street all the way out to the Rock, and then the power plant property, because the power plant property is where the maintenance and operations facilities and headquarters and storage facilities will be placed, and all of the big electrical equipment and transmission equipment are going to be, that's what it's going to be. There's going to be a big port on the waterside of that. It's going to take off part of the north T Pier and go all the way down to the area. They're going to have to, have to dig out, dredge out the port to allow these huge ships to come in here. Tremendous number of impacts here. The citizens should have the right to decide what we want for our city. Vote yes on A24 in November. That's a big help. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff, Public General Terry Simons again. At the risk of finishing the impact of the prior speaker as to A24, I think it's wishful thinking to think that we can pass a local ordinance that will in any way impact the momentum, authority, or general direction of the federal government. If you think that's not probable, all I would say is look at the Tennessee Valley Authority and the way that was put on the people of that part of the world when the federal government wanted to build a huge water project for power. This is a similar kind of project. Power is important to the entire country. And the federal government's responsibility is to make sure that power is provided. I think that while we may be able to have very small and incremental input, we're already losing the majority of the input on the planning aspects of this. By the way, the county has usurped our authority. And I think that when it comes to it, the federal and state, primarily the state, but ultimately the federal government, since these projects are all in federal waters, will basically roll over the top of us, and they will just tell us what they need for their project. And if they need to dredge our harbor, if they need physical facilities to park the boats that are pertinent to their wind facilities, I, I think it's going to be pretty much a given that that's going to happen. The real question, and I think the constant question, like where we can constantly focus, is, okay, fine. What's in it for us? What have you done for us lately? And I think what, as interesting and as important environmental aspects are, I've been focusing on the economic aspects of this because when push comes to shove, it's really going to come down to how much to come down to how much will the developers of these multi-billion dollar projects under the auspices of the state and the federal government are going to be willing to pay us, pay us, not the state, not the Fed, but how much is going to be paid to our city and to the benefit of our citizens and the benefit of our community for this intrusion into our lifestyle, because it's coming. Personally, I think it's going to be a horrific failure, but that will be 10 or 15 years down the road before we even know what a failure it's going to be. In the meantime, all the money will be spent, the impacts will have accrued, and it will just be left with the vestigial parts of a project that seemed like a good idea at the time. But we should get everything we can out of the Fed and the state in terms of dollars, because those dollars are a one-time thing. We should try to get as much as we can. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Nicole Dorfman. While I usually agree with Terry Simons, I am completely disagree with what he said. We have to fight for what we believe in. If we're just going to roll over and take a payout, I couldn't, how do I speak to my children about that, especially when we think it's going to fail and then our whole town is polluted and destroyed? I can't look my children in the face with that attitude. So I have a very different attitude. And in that note, I so appreciate Mr. Chafon, Ms. Kimball, the letter you wrote. I thought it was just the right tone, prioritizing our environment. Everything Rachel Wilson said, I stand behind that. So thank you for doing that. I do want to voice, I have a real discomfort here, and I'm sorry, but I just need to say it, that Councilmember Ford is employed by Assemblymember Don Addis, who in fact is the Chair of the Select Committee on Offshore Wind in California. This is a conflict of interest, if there ever was. Mr. Chafon, in fact, mentioned Representative Addis, that we had asked her for money. So I know that Councilmember Ford has done the right thing previously, recusing herself from discussions about the battery plant. I believe that it is only proper for her to recuse herself from discussions and votes having to do with offshore wind, and I was actually really surprised that she didn't do it here. I think it's very inappropriate, and I feel really uncomfortable with it. So that's all I'm going to say about that, and hopefully she'll make a statement and do the right thing. Talking about, let's see, I've just got, Motte McDonald, by the way, there's so much talk about economic development coming from REACH, that this is, oh, this is great economic development. Well, I'll tell you, Motte McDonald is a global player who's happened to be headquarters in the UK. So why are we not bringing this million-dollar contract for economic development to San Luis Obispo County or California? I mean, my goodness. And this is just a flavor of what is going to happen. We are going to be overrun by these global corporations taking the money, and we see that with the global corporations. The next thing is, I think it was Mayor Wixom spoke about that this is new technology, we're all trying to understand it. Not only is this new technology, but floating offshore wind is not even developed yet. The technology is not even developed. So they probably can't even tell us what they're going to use, because honestly, they really don't know. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff, and Neighbors. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a resident in North Morro Bay. You know, I relate to so many things that have been said here this night, tonight, by my fellow residents. There is a certain amount of fear and uncertainty in terms of this major development that is being proposed offshore. I just read through the actual state legislation that provided the million dollars in an earmark. It is specifically for the county, and the county essentially can do with that money what they pleased to do in terms of furthering the interest of port facilities for the offshore wind facility. So it's early in the game. My suggestion to our mayor and city staff and council members, and I believe you've been doing this already, so I'm going to encourage you to continue to do it, is to maintain as strong and close relationships with the county as possible, and also with our two state legislators, our State Senator Laird and Assemblywoman Addis. In Morro Bay right now, the residents, and to a degree, I think, the city and the council and staff, we feel like the little mouse on the train tracks with this big old train barreling down the tracks, and we're just going to get either run over or shoved out of the way, and it's not a comfortable feeling. So what can we do to remedy it? That's why I'm encouraging the mayor's city council members and staff to just maintain as close and strong relationships with the county and with our state-elected legislators, because that's where this is coming from. And when you maintain those relationships, you'll do the best that you can at representing us. And I also want to thank you, particularly the mayor and the manager and our Harbor District Manager Chafon, because there is discontent and concern amongst the residents, and we feel that you are being transparent and you are going to bat for the citizens of Morro Bay. We appreciate that.
Betty Winholz, just my two cents, that I agree totally that the letter is good and that we appreciate your backing the people, that you appreciate being transparent. Being at the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning when this was discussed, the theme among the board members was, well, we've got no control over permitting, we've got no control over anything else, blah, 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 but they've got that million bucks. And yet, they're not even affected by it. They know they don't have anything to do with it. They won't give it to, you know, Cal Poly, they won't give it to Sabla, and they won't give it to us. So I feel for you and appreciate Mr. Echols' encouragement, know that we stand behind you, and we know that you're up against some real, fill in the blanks.
You'll have to excuse me if I'm a little squirrely. I have been in meetings all day long. My name is Mandy Davis. I'm president of React Alliance, and this is pretty mind-blowing. I'm watching this whole process and the fact that, you know, the county is taking control of this, and we really don't seem to have much of a say in it. And especially their choice in consultants. I mean, they blew it the first time. You would think as thinking adults with some sort of, you know, capacity for logic, that they would not go there again. They are. So it seems to me, as a city that is really impacted by their choices, you can ask them how, why, is there any recourse? Can they go back over that and potentially make another choice, because they made a very bad one? You guys have been asked to make a list of questions and concerns and to really, you know, come together and to make, you know, some sort of very logical cohesive, you know, presentation on what we would like as a city. Problem is, is when you have to make those choices, when you have to ask those questions, it is very, very difficult to ask the right questions when you don't have all the information. And what has been happening over the last couple of years is we have gotten a very one-sided view, an industry view, a view from the, some of the government officials, Addis and a few others, Carvahal and Laird, that are very pro-wind. So we are getting this rosy picture of what this industry is, and they're not giving us any of the information on the impacts. So I would like to offer up an opportunity for the city. React Alliance has formed to deal with the dearth of information that is out there. The public knows very little. The city knows very little. Most people in this area that really care know very little. What we have done is we have put together a great PowerPoint that every single one of our board members, and it is diverse, we have been studying this for years. We just made this PowerPoint presentation to the Board of Supervisors, and it is very informative, and it does give you the information that the industry and the pro-wind government folks are not giving you. So I would ask if you would consider to allow React Alliance to give you some of that information that you're missing, and if you would discuss that and let us know, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on item 9C? AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for questions and comments. Any follow-up questions?
I would like to respond to the question that was posed from Ms. Dorfman. I, you know, when this, I saw this item come up, I made sure to inquire with our city manager, to discuss with her, to make sure that there wasn't any decisions made, whether it be pro-wind, anti-wind. We're not discussing whether or not, the decision tonight is not to, it's regarding county specifically, and how we are approaching the ask there. And so we came to the conclusion that there should not be any sort of conflict with that being, that it being county versus something state-related. So that's why I went ahead and sat in, because I felt like the conflict was very, like there wasn't a conflict. I didn't feel that there was. But I can refer to our city attorney. If you feel, if there's something that you'd like to add, I mean, I can walk away at this time before any further discussion happens and not vote.
So under state law, there's three traditional areas to look at for conflicts of interest, and we've analyzed these before in regards to your position with Assemblymember Addis and you being on the council. Under the Political Reform Act, there is no financial conflict present. State law statutorily exempts employment with a state agency as being covered under the Political Reform Act. Under incompatible offices, working for the assembly is not considered to be a public office, so incompatible offices conflicts don't apply. Under the 1090 prohibitions, there's no contract coming before the council that expressly involves even remotely Don Addis's personal interests. That leaves us with Government Code 8920, which many months ago, we went over all of this. Government Code 8920 talks about if you're working for the assembly, then you need to make sure that your public duties for that assembly position don't conflict with your council member positions. They give an example of the legislative process many, many months ago, when there was supposed to be a presentation to the wind group, the wind subcommittee, on specific legislation. I advised Councilmember Ford to not be a part of that, because that was something specifically called out by the state. But the controlling government code 8920 specifically says in 8924B, this part shall not be construed to prohibit an employee of either House of the Legislature from serving in an elective office of a local public agency. I spent quite a bit of time on the phone with the legal ethicist attorney for the State Assembly, Nate Silver. He concluded that there wasn't going to generally be a conflict with you participating in most council decisions, if not all, involving this subject matter. That leaves the fiduciary duty under the common law. Generally, that follows statutory interests. The courts generally defer to the statutes. The common law focuses on whether there's a financial interest involved in any decisions that you might be making. I don't see there being a financial benefit to you, either pro or on, based on you participating here tonight. So I thought it was useful to go over those five areas, which have been analyzed in detail before, and I agree with your conclusion that you participating in tonight's discussion doesn't present a conflict of interest reasonably.
Thank you, City Attorney Newmeyer. And to further go and to explain, I made a promise a while ago, when this was brought up before, that I would make sure to do everything within my legal ability, and also to make sure that I have the city's best interest, because that was my first and foremost commitment. And so I feel it's only beneficial that I sit here tonight in support of my city, who is in need of help, versus just walking away and not participating in this item. With both expertise from my city manager and from my city attorney and just vetting it myself, I feel as though my participation does not pose a conflict, but can only benefit our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. And yeah, we are not voting on anything tonight. We're only making any recommendations, if there are any. This has already been submitted, so I would remind, you know, that we brought this as an informational opportunity, again, as we've continued to try and offer transparency to our community. You know, I would just share that, you know, some of the conversations we've had have been also regarding if we continue, and to Mr. Simons' comments, you know, it is important, that saying, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. We need to be at the table. We understand that. It's difficult with our limited resources, because our harbor director, our community development director, our city manager all have other responsibilities running the city on a day-to-day basis, and this just is an impact that keeps coming. That being said, we're doing the best we can with our resources and educating ourselves and participating. We have talked internally, as Mr. Newmeyer said, about reimbursement policies, and if it's, we're not able to capture revenue from the state or federal government, which we do have a meeting later this week with Congressman Carvahal's staffer to continue conversations, you know, about funding resources, not just for offshore wind, but for our harbor needs. We might have an opportunity to utilize the draft reimbursements that they put together for our staff time if we continue conversations down the road with wind companies and their representatives, so there are reimbursement opportunities. I know City Manager Kimball spoke with one of the companies at the state of the city and asked about opportunities for funding for us to attend offshore wind conferences and things. So we are chasing other options to stay informed, to stay engaged, to stay there. I would share, and I don't think it is anyway, you know, as I said before, for port development, the port developers that have approached our community have been more focused on Port San Luis because of the open space availability, differentiating from the constraints of Morro Bay's just sheer size and environmental impacts. But that being said, none of them have gone away. They are still interested, and I would just say that for what it's worth, I don't think I'm sharing anything out of turn, is that their interests are not the north T pier. Their interests are the south T pier, because they recognize the environmental challenges at the north T pier with the Coast Guard, the Harbor Department, Mother's Beach, and all those environmental impacts. So as port developers have come and gone and approached us and moved on to Port San Luis and, you know, wherever, that was pretty much the gist of the conversation so far. I mean, we don't know, and we're not keeping anything from anybody. We just, they, you know, we don't know what we don't know. They're still trying to figure out what they're doing, and I agree with Mr. Simons that you can end up with all the impacts and no benefits. This is the balance we're trying to figure out and staying engaged, because they can determine in the end that it's not feasible, and we will receive the impacts and have nothing in return. So did you have anything else, Councilmember Ford?
Thank you for asking, Mayor Wixom. For just in the comment period, I just want to say that, just to kind of further say what I was, what I said earlier regarding support of our city, I appreciate the response that our city has come back with. considering our limited abilities. I believe that we do need, we need support. And I hope that the county sees our response and hopefully they give us a response, right? And I guess I do have a question regarding that. So will we get a report back on what the county's response is to this? Or is there like a timeline or like, how do we know where this goes?
Councilmember Ford, there is a timeline. The report was due February 23rd. They indicate that they will have produced an MOU by, I believe, March 23rd, and they expect it to be signed sometime in April.
And part of the push was that the funds had to be encumbered by June?
June 30th.
June, yeah. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I agree. I do want to say, as I mentioned earlier, deep diving into a lot of these reports. I mean, we absolutely have different, a different situation, a different environment, things that are unique to our city that both, quite frankly, both of the other locations don't have. And so I appreciate the details that were included in this submission. I was trying to figure out if there were any things that we needed to include to, you know, just help our efforts. The one thing that I do wish, that I want to say is I wish, I wish we had this conversation earlier. I really do wish we had this conversation earlier, this one here tonight. I think it would have been so helpful for us to all know, you know, where we've been, where we haven't been, why things have happened, why things haven't happened. But, you know, that's where we are. And as far as tonight, I just, I want to express how supportive I am of the work that's been done on this application. And I just hope that we go someplace positive from here.
And Councilmember Edwards, I would share that, and Director Shafan could correct me, or Vice Mayor Landron, but we've had a very limited time for really all of this to come to this point. The county was on hold for several months trying to determine how they were going to hire somebody and what they were going to do. So they've been sitting on this money for a while now before they came to this conclusion. We made an assumption that was not correct, that that money would be distributed to Port San Luis, to Morro Bay, to, you know, the individuals to hire their consultants. So we didn't know. It's just been recent. So it wasn't that we didn't intend to bring it sooner for participation. It just really, am I correct with that, Director Shafan? Thank you.
That's correct.
Councilmember Barton?
It's been interesting to see this tonight. It's, I think it's unfortunate, the way that it has gone, the way the money's been divided and, you know, like what everyone has said. I'm still hopeful that it will somehow will get something out of it. You can tell that there's a great deal of thought has gone into our response. And if perhaps some of that might be respected and, you know, so we could move forward on some of the things that we would like to see come out of this. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Yes, I think the goal is that we can receive as much feedback so we can provide information to our community, which has been our goal all along.
Right.
Mayor Protem?
I wonder if we could add some kind of language to the response? Like, because Port San Luis and Cal Poly Pier are basically in the same place. And for the money to be divided, I just feel like Morro Bay is so vastly different than that is basically the same area and that we need to have a more specific look at what we have here in Morro Bay because we are so different. So if that could be impressed somehow. And then I guess another issue is that this port study is only going to, is only looking at operations and maintenance in Morro Bay or Port San Luis. And there is also the opportunities or potential to bring in energy onto shore. And then there's also, with that comes substations. And at what point do we study those? Because, you know, that's not being addressed either in this information. And it's so compartmentalized. And it seems like that we should be looking at all of these things and the county should be too. I mean, they've already spent money with the first study. It seems like that if they really want to dig down and look at all of this, they're not, that's not being considered. And then staff time that we've, that, you know, is in, that's going to be involved in bringing a consultant up to date and, you know, like all of the information that they're going to have to give to the consultant, you know, in addition to what's already been spent. You know, everyone, we just went over the budget and the financial report tonight. It's clear, we just don't have the capacity to do this. And it's, this is all being foisted on us by the federal and state governments as well as the county through their relationship with Reach and who has identified Morro Bay as the green energy hub. It just seems like we're being, you know, really, it's not, it's just not fair the way that this is, you know, this ask of us. And then also, if we as a community decided, like when we got more information, that we do want to go ahead with any of these options, we're dealing with three different developers. And that, that is a competitive, you know, we, in that case, we hold all the cards. Now, how can you negotiate in a positive, you know, to the best of your advantage when you're being thrown into the mix with two other areas? I mean, it's limiting our ability. If we did want to negotiate, we're being limited there. So this whole thing is really not, not being done to our advantage at all. Those are my thoughts.
Anything to add, Director Shafan?
I would say those are all very valid points that Councilmember Landrum brought up.
So are we, I mean, I saw the report and we've had this discussion tonight. And I feel comfortable with the way we've submitted unless staff has determined from the conversations this evening that there should be something added that perhaps we didn't pick up on. Again, I think you dial in too much, then we get specific. And this is just going to be an overview anyway.
Yeah, Mayor Wickson, I mean, from what I've heard and the potential edits, I do believe we have covered most everything that's been discussed at your meeting tonight. So I'm not sure that any specific changes need to be made at this time?
I heard a couple of things I think is perhaps worth specify. For example, we want to stress that Morro Bay is different from other two respondents. And therefore, we believe, we strongly believe that we need a study specifically designated to us. And it is just kind of a general statement. So we can add that sentence somewhere in the beginning of the response. And we also, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Landrum earlier asked about circulation, parking. And then I find that we talk about, I talk about circulation and I could, we could specify saying including parking, parking arrangements. And then the events, I could also, we could, staff can specify that under tourism-based economy and including events on the waterfront. That would, those are, those are very good points. And I think they are valid in that. You just give a reminder for whoever going to do the study, then they realize, oh, yeah, you are different. And it's a help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, I just, I wanted to also add that when, one of the reasons that we, I was told by Senator Laird's staffer that we were, you know, really kind of, it seemed to me like the response that we weren't really being considered in this whole situation, even though we are, was because our community was not in favor of offshore wind. And my argument is that our community has not had a chance to really weigh in on it. I mean, I really don't think anyone in the county has. And, you know, because we don't know, we don't know what the benefits would be other than that this potentially could help the rest of the state. But we don't know what the financial benefits to us here would be to take this huge undertaking on. And we don't know what the impacts are. So I felt like that was really premature to kind of pigeonhole us like that. And I just, I wanted to make that public too.
Thank you. You know, again, our promise to you has been that we will bring anything as it comes along. We'll put it up on the website. I know that, you know, the city's been posting and Director Shafan posts. And we are all five available to answer questions when we can. And I hope that when we get back from the Offshore Wind Summit in May, we will be able to have a more information to bring back and have a public forum where we can share that information with the community and have engagement. And hopefully, you know, we'll be a little further down the line. Right now, this is, you know, the survey vessel's starting and they have been contacting the Harbor Department. I know that, you know, some of them, I think there was a concern about the size of them and they didn't, didn't fit well in Morro Bay. So we are addressing things as they come. But I also agree that, you know, we have to recognize that the federal and state are barking at our heels. So thank you all for your input. Thank you all for your input tonight. Future agenda items, anybody?
Yeah, I do have one, Mayor. And it actually kind of coincides with a lot of things that came up tonight. And I'm just asking for my colleagues' support on just a general review of the existing subcommittees. We essentially know why these are formed for specific purposes and with a timeline. But I know that I'm currently on one right now, the Downtown Design one, along with Mayor Protem Landron. And I've just heard these things come up. And I think maybe examining the ones that we have and taking a look at whether or not, basically in the interest of transparency, if we still need to have all the ones that we have, discussing whether or not there's ones we should discontinue or continue on with, and also perhaps making room for new ones. So I am putting that out there because I know we have a lot going on, but it just seems like, it just seems like this is really an important thing to establish for us as we move forward.
So I guess I'm looking for how, you already have the subcommittee. So I guess I'm trying to figure out what, and we've been doing the Joint Advisory Board, council and advisory board. So you're looking for, we don't have any other subcommittees other than are designated that we've already voted on in January. Are you talking about those subcommittees or are you talking?
Yeah, I'm actually, it's everything that we had on consent agenda item and that we approved in terms of the ones that are laid out. But for example, I guess, Mayor, the Wharf Subcommittee, if we are closing out that contract with FBV, then does that one really need to continue? And is there another, do we, could we make room for other subcommittees? Because we all are very busy working on some of the ones that we have. And I just wanted the opportunity for us to just, in an open forum like tonight, to take a look at that.
Yeah, I would share the Wharf Subcommittee isn't going away. We have to decommission a wastewater treatment plant and put in IPR still. I'm not sure what the timeline for city staff would be, but is there support for that?
I'm curious. I'm trying to figure out, okay, in order to support this future agenda item, I'm wondering if we could, so like in my case, I know that we have the Sero Bay Alliance of Care. Right now, that one is being considered kind of restructuring and kind of trying to figure out what that, what the, what we as a council want to get from that committee. Trying to think, I mean, I guess like something like that would be worth including, I guess that would be included. But also, I think as far as, well, that's not a subcommittee, that's a liaison. Sorry, I'm processing out loud here. I guess my other question would be, Cindy, would be, would, within this discussion and this agenda item, would it, would it include the scope of like what we're able to do as a subcommittee? Or would it be, are you just wanting to talk about whether or not we want subcommittees?
Yeah, no, thank you for that, Councilmember Ford. Yes, originally, I was looking at how we form them, how we execute them, what the role of staff, council, community members are, when we, what the scope of work is. Because I do feel like sometimes, for example, with the Downtown Design one, I'm, I'm, I haven't, you know, it was formed for one reason and then it's kind of morphed into other things. And I've just been observing this for a while in terms of, and just really wanting to have us take a look and make sure that we are indeed forming these for a specific reason. We have a timeline. We have a goal in terms of a specific purpose, like with policy, that we're trying to establish by forming it. And just again, taking a look, because some of these have been around for way longer than we have.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I'm not, those are city selection committees that are already designated and we've already dropped some off. So I guess, I mean, I understand what you're saying about the committees we form specific to those things. And I totally am bored with that. But our committees that we've already established that are city committees, I'm not really looking to spend more time really in. I'm, I hear what you're saying about the Downtown Design one and those that we add, you know, like the subcommittee with HAB and CFAC and those, you know, where it morphed into something beyond what it was. And I support that. I mean, if you want to have that conversation about how, what that looks like, but I'm not, I'm not interested in the city committees that we have established that were designated, as Councilmember Ford said, that are liaisons or, you know, those city ones.
Sorry to confuse you.
No.
Okay. So.
I'll give another example. Yeah, no, no, I'll give you another example. CFAC meeting the other night, wonderful ideas being thrown around there, very creative. And one of them that came to mind that's been sitting on my mind as we are talking about all these larger issues that are coming before us is just the very idea that we're dealing with, you know, expenditures basically going over us and not having revenues increasing and having this, the time for maybe a subcommittee of CFAC or two members of CFAC or, you know, a couple of members of HAB and council taking a look at where we're at in the next two to three years while we're having the larger discussions on these bigger items. And I'm just concerned that we're not focused enough. And I just would love to have that open discussion on the formation of subcommittees with those as examples.
Okay, so that's more specific. So you're talking about the formation of subcommittees or some guidelines to it? Is that what, some sort of discussion?
Like a subcommittee 101? I mean, I'm just, no, I'm just wanting, I'm trying to wrap my head around because, I mean, I understand you have something that you want and I'm trying to get to a yes here. So essentially, how a subcommittee is formed? What the scope of work, what's legally allowed, I guess, for a subcommittee to? Was this?
Subcommittees are supposed to have a duration and a purpose. And they're supposed to be defined as such. So, I mean.
So you just answered, like you just?
And they're appointed through council direction, correct?
Yes, the council can appoint two of its members. Yes, the council can appoint two of its members, as long as it's not a quorum. A Subcommittee is supposed to be led by those council members. They're in charge of it. And to not be subject to the Brown Act, it has to have duration and purpose. I mean, it's spelled out in the government code.
So then that's just like within each individual Subcommittee to dictate how they want to, I mean, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't seem like it needs...
It gets formed under council direction at this time.
Right. So is that what you want to look at? Like, what, like, the Downtown Design District? I could see us just looking at that and saying...
I think it's a much more broader discussion than, I think we're kind of sorry getting down into the weeds only because I use those examples. But, but it's, okay, it's something that happened between getting CFAC and HAB together. Councilmember Landrum, where we had a specific thing for Mr. Shafan to go and do in terms of report, and then there was confusion as to, we got veered off, it morphed into something else. So what I'm trying to do is have an open forum discussion with regard to subcommittees, the formations of them, and the scope of work, and any details within that, so that the greater community can understand every single time we go to do these things, what we are, what our purpose is, being very clearly defined. I mean, we've even had issues understanding what some of the, the, the subcommittees have been formed for. And I just would love to have that open discussion for us. That's all. If I don't have support, that's, I got it.
So are you asking for staff to come back with information on how each of the existing subcommittees were formed, what their scope of work is, and what we need to do in order to form a new Subcommittee? Or, I want to make sure I'm getting this right. I'm sorry. I know it's late, guys. Okay.
Yeah. So I would say, just kind of generalities, generalities, just kind of reviewing the policy of forming subcommittees, and essentially looking at the ones we have. Are they currently doing the scope of work that this council wants them to be doing? That could be one part of it. So it's just more of that conversation.
I don't know, it's going to be scope, because each one's different, but I would support looking at the policy so that the advisory boards understand how the subcommittees are formed. Because I hear many times, we want to form a Subcommittee, and it's not that purvey to do that. So, yeah.
I, yeah.
That's what you're, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
As long as we don't put it high up on the agenda, because they're pretty impacted right now. So, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I could support.
If that's, if that's the goal out of that, is to have clarification, understanding for the advisory boards then for...
I think both for us and for the advisory boards. I think it would be just really helpful, because I'm getting a lot of interest in the ones that I'm, you know, like CFAC that I'm liaison with, and I'm seeing this come up, and I just want to make sure that we have. It'd be great to have the conversation.
Yeah. So you got a guess for me for a future, do we need a guess? I don't know.
Anyone else?
No, I'm good. I do. I, this, this isn't, it's, maybe it doesn't even have to be a future agenda item. It's really, it's kind of funny. But I just was wondering, because somewhere I saw that something was posted, the city, you know, posts notices and stuff like that, in the Tribune, and it just dawned on me that the Tribune is only available once a week. And so is that okay? Or, I mean, can you notice something once a week?
That's probably, a city clerk is, thank you.
I may need Chris to jump in with the terminology, but...
When a legally required notice, it needs to be published, there's considered to be a paper of official record. And the reality is, is that these papers of official record were designated by the courts, basically decades ago usually. And whether or not they're published daily, weekly, or monthly, that's still the official paper. And if they're only published weekly, then it just means that, I know Dana in the past has had to make sure it gets sent to that newspaper well ahead of time, so it can get published timely. But you bring up an interesting point, Councilmember Landrum, on the system definitely should be reformed in California on when you publish in newspapers. The system's a little messed up, frankly, because it's so old. And it just burdens our staff with, if you need to do a two-week notice, maybe they got to send it over four weeks ahead of time, because they only publish once a week.
Well, and it seems like the public is missing out on their ability to have access to the notice, because they only, if, if they take the paper, they only get to see it once a week. So, it just seems like it's really limited.
The city is required, like, we have certain newspapers that California says, that is your adjudicated newspaper, you must publish the legal notice in. And then decades go by, and that paper changes its practices, and that's still the newspaper you publish it in. I mean, it's, it's an issue that I'm aware of, and it's come up with other cities too, that I've worked with, where it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Maybe it did in 1952, when they adjudicated that newspaper. So you're spot on.
And provide legislative updates if there's some changes, some legislative updates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one item I'm going to ask for then. Might as well throw it out there, but I'm looking to send it to the Planning Commission. I'd like to have a future agenda item sent to them that came to light during the libertine project about parking credits and the formula that we use. We have new development projects, several in the pipeline on the Embarcadero, and I would like to visit our challenged parking credit formula that was created several years ago, because it seems that it might not have been implemented properly, like we were adding instead of subtracting. So I'll be looking for some support to send that to the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.